Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start the meeting for January 5th, 2023, the new year. It is 6:05 PM. And can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so everybody knows we're recording via WCAT 12, also the meetings being fed through Zoom, so you're being recorded via Zoom, and also streamed live on Facebook, too. So everybody is aware of that. Okay. First thing on the agenda is review and possible vote on new application for a common particular license for Mass Appeal Pizza and Bread Company located at 2162 Main Street in West Warren. Okay.
I didn't get the certificates done. I don't know. I'll have them done.
But we should still vote, yeah. We just, yeah, we just gotta sign them.
Sign them later.
When you get them done. All right. Do you have any? You guys representing?
I'm representing Mass Appeal Pizza and Bread Co. I'm Jeffrey Fleming.
Do you wanna stand up and talk about it?
Sure.
Yeah, so your name's Jeffrey Fleming?
Yeah.
And you're the owner?
I am. I operate what is gonna be known here in West Warren as Mass Appeal Pizza and Bread Company. Our background is in food service. I have a background in restaurant, but in the last 10 years, we've been in the concession business where we have interests at Brimfield Flea Market annually, a couple times a year. We're in the Big E as a representative in the Rhode Island building. We have concessions on Miss Guamique Beach that are seasonal. And about six months ago, we started looking in Central Mass for a pre-existing turnkey scenario where we could go into a potentially vacant area that had a previous restaurant in there to avoid some of the tough things to get started. And we were between Belcher Town, a place in Ludlow, and a spot here at 2162 Main Street. And we were just delighted with the process and the know-how when we contacted the town. There was an easy process for us to follow, and we're excited. We wanted to be situated between Worcester and Amherst. We have mobile pizza units that are looking for accounts, and we need to end mass have a commissary that you're working out of. So the building that we found suits us perfectly. It's modest. It should have some hometown charm. And then when the masses aren't there, we have a way to keep ourselves very busy, which makes our plans sustainable, where others may have a more difficult time in the restaurant industry at the moment. We're hopeful we have a unique approach. And I'm a Brooklyn-trained pizza maker. We also felt like Central Mass needs a landmark pizza place, and we hope to one day be that place, so.
Very good. Always great to have new business in town. We definitely welcome new business. And thank you for choosing us, and congratulations on starting up a new business in town.
Thanks.
So, do you have any questions?
Are you gonna do delivery, or how's the work?
I'm gonna fill out each of the potential scenarios. Right now, my four adult sons are the crew besides myself. They're in their early twenties, and we'll likely deliver in some capacity. There's other platforms that you can use if we don't have the ability to carry the staff ourselves, but I think in this area, in rural New England, delivery has its advantage. So I would like to. Initially, it's gonna be fast casual and takeout, you know, dominant. And then with catering, we do deliver the catering stuff for corporate or business events. So in some capacities, we'll deliver right from the start, but the standard pizza delivery model, we're not sure exactly how we're gonna go. Grubhub and some of these other outlets are interesting, but may not apply, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're gonna have good, you know, hours that are six or seven days a week to be something that you can count on when you're hungry and know it's gonna be available for you.
Cool. Great. Okay, no sir? No?
When are you starting?
We're gonna do some preview weekends in January, and then do a grand opening feel on Valentine's Day, heart-shaped pizzas and some packages for families to come see what we're doing, but maybe in the first three weeks of January, just a preview menu, give people a little insight to what we're doing, and try to build up some steam for a grand opening feel, whatever that really means, in February on Valentine's night. We kinda have that targeted as our first full menu and full night, so.
You think so?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
I have nothing.
Sounds like a great idea, you know, and you have a backup plan if business isn't terrific at that spot right now, but it will pick up once you establish a name, you know, brand mark and stuff. So stick with it.
The invisible consistency is important, so.
All right. So, your motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the application for Mass Appeal Pizza and Bread Company. Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Diddy Biddies, aye.
David Dufran, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You got your license.
Welcome to town.
Welcome to town.
Glad to be here.
Sign it, so we'll get that to you.
Yeah. Sounds good. Jim, if you send me an email that it's ready, I can come get it. I do wanna say we spent some time in other towns, working. In Belcher Town, we had a potential place that was similar, and Jim really at least gave us a clear-cut path from concept to this meeting here, and it was the deciding factor to put our energy in the winter and get open as opposed to delay it till spring. And we're excited to be here. We hope to be the first of a few people who find this an attractive area to do business.
So we'll hope so. And I want... Jim's a great guy, but don't talk too much, too nice about him because he doesn't have no more money.
I wanna thank the board for voting unanimously, but I want you to know that Jim helped out so much. Mr. Ferreira helped out so much. It's a delight knowing that we have a administrator in town, other than the selectmen or select people, which is very important, but to have some one individual to go through and guide these new people coming into town is extraordinary. It's really nice. It helped out quite a bit.
There's a long time coming, and we fought hard to get that position approved.
Yeah, I would say so.
I'm still surprised.
Worth every dime.
He's worth every dime?
Absolutely.
And he's definitely, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to trying your pizza, too.
We're gonna do some meet and greets, and we'll get the word out as to when those are, so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Suppose if I unlock the door?
All right. Next thing on the agenda is discussion and possible vote to enter into a lease agreement with Hamden Communications Corporation for Space on and or near Telecommunications Tower Facility located at 1621 South Bridge Road in Warren. Kinda messed that up a little bit. You guys are just right. Chiefs, you're up.
We're up. Good evening.
Gentlemen, please identify yourself in your position.
I'm a void fire chief.
Thank you, that's giant luck, Lucy.
So this is the final, this is the third and final lease agreement for the third tower that's gonna be part of the system that we're putting, been putting together over the last few years. This one is very essential because this is actually the tower that links directly to Rutland itself. So this is gonna be the first tower, more than likely, that will be operational, and everything will be switched over to that tower, and we will be running off that tower temporarily as the other two towers are, go through the process of being built themselves, or I shouldn't say towers being built, but the equipment being put on the existing towers. So this is, this is one that the police are currently on and have been operating on for years. We are not on that. We are still on a tower on Coy Hill, so we will be switching our stuff over to that. So there is some existing equipment that the police do have currently in place on that tower, but this will, this is an essential piece to start the entire process to Rutland itself. So this is the third and final lease.
Do you have anything else, too?
Ah, he pretty soon sums it up.
He likes to talk.
He wants to get our cameras out there. Do you have any questions, sir?
No.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Nope. I just wanna say that town council finished reviewing this. There was some minor adjustments that were agreeable by Hamden Communication. It has been updated. It requires all board members' signature, this agreement.
This is the two ones. It works on the three towers. So right now, when I have a tower go down, I'm dead in the water. Now that it's any three points, if one tower just goes down, the other two know to back it up, and we won't lose.
There's redundancy built into this system so that we won't have that, the problems we've had in the past, and we hopefully won't have those problems. So everything is gonna be insured. The equipment we have is insured, you know, thank you to Jim for putting those policies in place, so we're, we're pretty much protected all the way around. You know, God forbid we had a liking strike or something like that. So the next, the final step in this, or the final couple steps in this, is once the, all the agreements are signed and forwarded, we submit paperwork for notice, notice to proceed into each one of those of design, you know, and that's all stuff that we do behind the scenes, the FCC licenses, which have already started and happening. So all of that stuff is being done behind the scenes, but the biggest thing was to get the lease agreements nailed down.
What's the term on this?
So that one there is, I'm just trying to think of the thought. That one there, 'cause it's an existing one, it's, we're just adding that equipment to it. I know that the Coy Hill one was, I believe, another two-year extension. I'd have to look at it. I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize, but I can't remember exactly what the term on that one is.
Three years. Three years.
Yeah, I knew it.
It's on page two.
Been reading so many of these, I've lost track.
Paragraph five.
My longest lease is the one that's on Gilbert Road.
Any other questions?
No. Where do I sign?
That would be the back page.
Right here. Right here.
All right. So I have no questions. This is a long time in coming. About time we get this all fixed. We're very close.
Ready for the motion? All right. Motion to accept the lease agreement with Hamden Communications Corporation for Space on and or near the telecommunications tower facility located at 1621 South Bridge Road in Warren. Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Diddy Biddies, aye.
David Dufran, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Let's sign. You should shred that. Shred that piece of paper, please. Kind of redundant, trying to print our names under our written name.
Put it in the same date three times.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda. Vote on the acceptance of a state grant 911 transition award fiscal year 2023, the regional dispatch, and sign the intermunicipal agreement, intermunicipal contract agreement with the town of Rutland, Mass. You guys?
So these are the assessment grants that we've been getting. We've been very fortunate to get these grants. This is the third one that we've gotten, and actually, because of these, we've gone to the town meeting and had, asked the townspeople to redirect that money that was meant for Rutland and actually put it towards this radio project. So this radio project wouldn't be where it is today if it wasn't for those assessment grants that we were eligible, eligible for through Rutland. So these were a huge factor in this, and we've been lucky to get three of them. We're hoping for four, up to possibly five, we could get that. So, you know, Rutland has cost us little to no money thus far, since we've been with them for years, and we've actually gained in projects. So, you know, that won't happen all the time. I mean, you know, we're eligible because we're newer members over there, but if we, if we didn't get these, we wouldn't be where we were with this infrastructure project. So these are great things, so this is acceptance every time there is a grant, and we do get that, as a formality, the board selection has to accept that.
Then also, the town of Rutland, who administers the dispatch, would like to sign, have a new municipal contract agreement signed from the board.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Any questions, sir?
Nope.
And we have the contract?
Contract's in the package.
Short little one there?
Yep. Three pages. Requires all, all three signatures.
So one thing I noticed on here, Section 4 requirements of the towns, in its paragraph two, in its, "Each town shall maintain a basic backup communications point that may be manned by personnel from the Rutland Regional Emergency Communications Center in the event of a, an equipment breakdown situation or abnormal emergency situation. Be positioned with two, two old radios and access to internet and phone."
So basically, we do...
Have that in this new plan?
Yeah, so basically, we can use, we've done this before. We've used a fire station for that if we've had to. We've used, we can use the police station for that if we have to. So, you know, there have been certain storms or larger events that we've lost communication somehow, or there's so much going on in all five of the towns that we've had to kind of make our own little area so that we're able to have, if we need someone to come in, they can do that. We have Wi-Fi access there, so we do have that option in there. That's something we've done actually before. It doesn't happen very often, but we do have the ability to run a basic dispatch out of there if we have to.
And do you have any questions or concerns with the contract?
No, I honestly, this is, there are very few towns that are left in our area that are standalone dispatch centers. You know, the town of Ware recently moved over to Westcom, which does Munson and Westfield and a couple other places, so everything's being pushed regionally. You know, that's where it is. So if anything, we're a little bit ahead of the curve. You know, Braintree Dispatch does all Brookfields, Hardwick, Brimfield, Hall and Wales. So all this entire area, everybody has merged with somebody, you know. Nobody can afford to do it on their own. The services are very limited when you do that, and the state, all the state 911 funding is pushed into the regional grants. So we've done this, just like everyone else. It's beneficial, you know, you're eligible for these assessment grants through the 911, E-911 system and everything, so honestly, it's, it's the best bet for the town. I have no reservations about signing up with them again.
You're good with it, chief?
Yep, absolutely. You go to states like Florida, and they have probably four PSAPs for the whole state.
Yeah, it's amazing.
And Massachusetts, and there was probably almost a thousand a couple years ago.
The Northeast is, the Northeast is historically 20 years behind everyone else, and it's just the way it is, and we're finally warping into what other states have figured out many, many years ago. So, you know, all of these 365-plus towns that are, you know, they're, 361, I think, in this, in this, you know, each one of them had their own PSAP, their own police, their own fire. Everything is separate in this area, but for the first time ever, things are really getting pushed into a regional setting, and I think that's, that's a good thing, to be honest, in some ways.
Do you have any?
No, sir.
Motion to accept the state grant 9/11 transition award fiscal year 2023 for regional dispatch. And to sign the intermunicipal contract agreement with the town of Rutland. Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Diddy Biddies, aye.
David Dufran, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Do you have the original?
Right here. I'm gonna sign the top line.
That's a signature? It's getting smaller and smaller.
And Derek's is getting bigger and bigger.
Mine works better on those tight little lines. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Discussion and possible vote on the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the police department.
That's me.
What do you want money for?
So two things I have. First one was, we recently voted and changed the parking structure fee, the parking ticket fees.
Yeah.
So now we have parking tickets. They weren't cheap. So some of them we looked at, we worked three years. Jim and I worked together, and we bought a company to do them for $853.54. And I know the parking clerk doesn't have anything like that in her budget, so we were looking to see if we could use the arper money to fund the new parking tickets.
Can we? It's a usable source, sure.
Well, I'll ask, is there any other place we could take the money from? I mean, it's not a lot of money, honestly.
No, I mean, without a town meeting, you really can't.
Okay, so there's nothing like in selectmen's budget or something like that?
Well, I mean, you know, you know, I think that's all been planned for.
Okay.
You know? I don't see it.
Yeah, it's kinda like an administrative expense.
Right. It's not an ongoing expense. I mean, there's a thousand tickets that will probably last them a long... I mean, that's a thousand tickets that will probably last them a long time.
They'll get through that in a couple of weeks, the way they're going. Don't speed in town. All right, do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
No, just something, that's, that's what, that's what it is.
Did you have something?
Nope.
I, I see no problem with it. We gotta get it, gotta get the tickets, got updated information. You know, I don't have an issue with it.
I guess we just have to budget for this for the future, right? I mean, if it costs a lot.
I've been here for sixteen years and we haven't bought tickets since.
Oh, really?
And how many tickets have you had?
Okay.
The winter's the big one with the
Parking binder?
So I know.
Now, I think what drove up the cost for these tickets were the actual design of the tickets, you know.
Oh, okay.
There's a stand, there's usually, towns usually use this, you know, three-layer carbon copy. We're gonna have that, but the envelope, right?
That was a big part.
The envelope.
So, and with that, you had to buy a minimum of twenty-five-hundred. So that's why, it was just over three thousand dollars if we did envelopes. Or you could do it where it's just a card like everywhere else does. So it's still three copies. You print them writing on a card and the card's going on the windshield instead of an envelope.
Five hundred tickets, it's like you'd be set for the next fifty years.
Well, that's a problem too. And then if, if, if a board, a future board ever wants to raise the rate, raise the rates, so. So a thousand is the lowest amount I think you could get from this, this quantity right here.
Right, yeah.
Or no, you could get, you could get a little less, but it makes sense to, to do it, you know, for the cheap money.
A hundred dollars more for, last for five hundred.
And we have.
So if, if that was approved, you still have a little over a hundred left.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, yep.
The motion?
Okay. Motion is
Motion is for, because I, both of them.
Oh, so the other part of that, is it all together?
When you do that number sign.
Do we want to do them both together?
No, you, you could do them separate votes. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to set aside eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-four cents for new ticket printing. And for new ticket printing.
From ARPA. It's from ARPA, right?
Mark Fonsier.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Viddy Viddies, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And then you have kits now, right?
So we don't have proper equipment for active shooter and we have to gain access to them. So two things I'm asking for, for tonight, if you use ARPA fire, is, one is four bags of breaching tools. So cruisers can have breaching tools if they have to go in somewhere and gain access. Those were about seven hundred and twenty dollars a piece or so. So I'm looking for four of those for the cruisers and also two medical bags. So the cost that we were looking at was there three thousand one hundred and two dollars. I was just talking with Mr. Ferrara. I didn't include shipping in that. I don't know if there's gonna be any shipping costs. So I didn't know if we could add two hundred dollars to that, round it to four thousand in case there are some kind of shipping costs.
Yeah, you have to have them. That's one of these things we've talked back and forth quite a bit about is making sure you have the proper equipment to be able to respond to some incidents, especially at schools or whatever and, you know, with the world today and the way it's been for several years now. Does have bolt cut, is right?
Yes. Actually, they're, they're made so you can't get electrocuted, dude.
Non-conductive?
Yep. Says up to a hundred thousand volts on that.
Well, I wouldn't test that. They'll take their word for it, all right.
All right, so did you read the one review that was a three-point-oh out of five?
No, actually.
What'd they say?
It wasn't on there.
Oh.
There was no words, it was just a
Review?
That was one person that went over the thousand volts.
Yeah, right. It was less than pleased.
Okay. Any trauma kits?
Yes, the med bags.
You talked about them, yeah?
Yeah. So those are basically active shooter med bags. And a quick explanation, the size, we can put what we want on them. In the middle, they come with these little kits. So if we were to, if we were to have an active shooter, we could, while we're moving forward, we can actually just reach behind us and grab a kit and throw it to people without slowing down. Everyone knows now we cancel out, you gotta go to the threat is. So.
And come with tourniquets and stuff too?
Yep.
Cool.
I think in
That's a big one to have in there.
In the individual packets that actually has instructions in Spanish and English.
It says bilingual instruction card. But that could be any language.
That's true. I assume it's Spanish and English.
Cantonese. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
I, any questions?
Ask a mechanic to change the oil without tools.
Do you have any?
I got tools.
So again, I'm absolutely in support of this. This is a great idea. We have to have the tools. We gotta give you guys the tools to do your job. And this is one of those things that, you know, through incidents like Columbine and, you know, things like that, these kids, when they decide to shoot up a school, they lock doors and chain things and you gotta be able to get into those areas. And if you can't get into the area, you can't stop the shooting.
Waste of time.
It's a waste of time. So it's sad that we have to think about this stuff, but I'd rather have it and never need it than need it and not have it. So. Do a motion.
Well, I'm gonna confirm, how much do you want?
Uh, I added two hundred dollars for shipping on that, so four thousand.
Four thousand, okay. All right, I'll make a motion to set aside ARPA money for entry kits, med bags and med kits for four thousand dollars.
Four thousand two dollars.
Four thousand two dollars.
Hold on one second, what? Do you have something?
You did, the, the tickets are separate, right?
Tickets, tickets are separate, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Viddy Viddies, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And it's for four thousand two dollars dedicated to the, the response and medical kits for the police department from ARPA funds.
So that brings the fund to a hundred thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is continued discussion and possible, possible vote on the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to fund a senior center, center, senior outreach program at the Quay Bog Valley Community Development Corporation for Warren seniors. Okay. I got that, got that out. Come on up, ladies. You're on the hot seat. What do you have for us tonight?
Well, first, thank you for letting us come, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate Mr. Ferrara for having us. My name's Carol Zins, Executive Director, Sheila Cuddy, everybody knows her. And this is Sharon from your council and aging, your hostess. So we're here today to talk about the Warren Senior Outreach Program. And what the Senior Outreach Program does is it takes, fills a void for the seniors around here. The ones that can't drive to a store, that kind of thing. You don't have any grocery stores or anything like that. So a lot of folks that don't have a car or have any kind of disability, it's hard for them to get out. A lot of people are alone, they don't have the resources. So this program actually began as the Hardwick Senior Outreach Program. And it moved into Ware and into Warren and into Velchertown during the pandemic. But those funding sources have dried up now. And so we were seeking sources so we can keep this program going because we would hate to abandon these people since they've gotten used to us doing their grocery shopping and picking up their medicine. In addition, we'll go to the post office for them, things like that, things that they can't get done. As you know, in this town, you can't have the mail delivered to your house, which is really a hard thing for a lot of seniors around here. So that's why we're here and we're looking for money. I don't know if you have the paperwork from the Community Development Program?
We do.
You do, excellent. It did change, numbers changed a little bit. We did add two more Warren seniors recently. We had a, a senior who was, was physically, physically disabled and living in a rat-infested home in Hardrick. And we moved her to West Warren, so she's in West Warren now. So we've been servicing her as well as another person in Warren who was referred by the Senior Center who is sight impaired, she only has vision in one eye. So, and she has no car, so she has no way to get there. So we're able to do that for them, fill these gaps.
Thank you very much for doing that. And where did they change as far as what numbers, what costs?
The cost, the proposed budget is the same. Yeah, it was just the amount of people. We've added a couple more members.
All right, so you're looking for a total of eight thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
Well, I'll just say I'm in favor of this, but I guess ARPA money will run out. So we can, you know, this is fine for now, my opinion. But what about next year? So we have to figure out where we can, how we can budget this in.
And that's why I'm here, so I'm Sheila Cuddy, the Executive Director. And with this, thank you again so much for allowing us to speak. But with this funding, Carol, it's doing some surveying of the seniors so we can gather some hard data about what difference this makes in their lives. You know, our goal is to help frail seniors remain in their homes, which is where they want to be. And we are planning to reach out to some local health foundations such as the Fallon Foundation for funding going forward into the future. Once we have some additional data, we hope to have this be more of a public-private partnership so that the entire burden would not be on the municipal health.
Great, cool, thank you. Any questions? No. Do you have any questions?
No questions, I could just echo what Rich said, you know, no, I completely support this. You know, we should take care of our, our people and do whatever we can for them. If we can, if we have any way to help, I'd say yes.
Do you have any questions, sir? No, sir. Again, I'm absolutely in support of stuff like this for our seniors. You know, our senior population is probably one of the most kind of overlooked. You know, people really don't pay attention till it's a problem. You know, we had a, a town, incident in town where we had to open up a shelter for a little while and our senior population, some, some residents came to that shelter. And that was great that we can do that. And, you know, it just shows us how we, in everyday life, we're not thinking enough about them. And doing these outreach programs are actually absolutely essential to have. And thank you very much for doing that in town. You're doing a great job. Do a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to set aside eight thousand dollars from ARPA funds for, what are we calling this? Warren Senior Outreach Program.
Warren Senior Outreach Program through the Quay Bog Valley Community Development Corp.
Okay. Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Viddy Viddies, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously and this is dedicating eight thousand dollars from ARPA funds to Quay Bog Valley Community Development Corporation for Warren seniors, correct? For the outreach program.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, for everything you do. Definitely, we'll all be there someday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, discussion impossible vote to extend the contract between the town, town and Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for its planning assistance with the town's municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. Okay. Mr. Ferrara, do you have?
Yes, so this, this was brought up at a CDAC meeting, Rich, right? Not too long ago. This is just a, a request made by CMRPC, our partner, planning partner, just to get a little bit of an extension to allow them to finish up some of the, the editing that's been involved with our, our municipal vulnerability preparedness, our plan for, for the town.
And they're looking from January first, two thousand twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Just a, just a little bit, you know.
Any extension?
A couple of months, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sounds good to me.
Do you have any questions, sir?
We all need extensions.
Sometimes we do, sometimes we do. There's a lot to do. Okay. A motion?
Make a motion to extend the contract between the town of Warren and the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for the town's municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Viddy Viddies, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. They are extended.
In concile.
She likes to use the blue ink. You guys in your blue ink.
I have a pen that it writes with.
That's worse.
I have a green one.
Right, screen.
Are you getting this one back or?
No. No.
Passing along? All right. Okay, number seven, review impossible vote to execute a contract between the town of Warren and Weston and Sampson, Inc. for bidding, construction, administration, administration and engineering services for the Prospect Street Improvement Project.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is again, came from the CDAC meeting a few weeks ago. This is for engineering services. The town has historically used Weston and Sampson as their engineering partners for different projects that they've done throughout the town. The, this particular project, the School Street and Prospect Street Improvement Project is, is part of a, a grant that the town received from the state, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that was accepted a few weeks ago by the board. This is for the engineering services for, for that. It's a contract for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's for engineering, construction administration, bidding and closeout work. This is a, a contract that has been approved by town council as to form. And I do see that there's a signature section for town council on another copy that I will also get you. So I would ask that if you choose to, to, to sign this tonight, that I'm gonna provide you with a, a copy where it has a section next to the town accountant where, where Jeff would sign as to form, because I, I want him to sign this as well. So this is a, this is a pretty standard contract. However, you know, during the discussion at the CDAC meeting, I brought it to the attention of, of the committee that the town has a bylaw that says any contract that is over four thousand dollars requires a performance bond of such nature. I guess it was been past practice that, that, that was not enforced. I would recommend that the board enforces that moving forward and keeping in line with our, our bylaw.
So I think one of the comments at that meeting was that because this is engineering, it's different than like a construction.
Sure. And my argument to that would be is that, you know, an engineer can make a mistake too on a plan, right? And it's better to be protected than not. And that, you know, an engineer's performance is very important as part of the plan, and to have the town fully protected and to follow the bylaw of the town, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I don't see why we wouldn't have a performance bond, but I know we've kind of gotten away from those for some reason, but again, we've had issues in the past with some projects like the stairs downtown, things like that.
And then CAD out here.
Yeah. Yeah, we need that stuff for, we need that protection to be able to go after and get that money and get it fixed correctly. So I'm all for the performance bonds, they should be in there. It protects the towns, you know, the town and our financial interests, so. And I don't see why they wouldn't provide one, there shouldn't be any issue.
It's a big company, you know, they shouldn't have, they shouldn't have a problem getting one.
So what, in this case, what is it covering, like the 37,500?
Yeah, it would cover the entire contract.
Full amount of the contract, okay. I mean, is it expensive to do something like that?
Well, no, not, not, it depends, the bonding companies that look at, you know, you know, the company's history, how long they've been in business, the size of the contract, have the, you know, past performance issues. Just for example, the keyless entry system, you know, that we just had installed, I made the guy, it was over 4,000 bucks, I said, you got to give me a performance contract, a performance bond. You know, the guy is a small business owner, you know, he was able to get one, it was costing him maybe an extra 200 or 300, but it protects the town's interest, and there's a reason for that, you know, for them to have that. So, you know, I think it's, you know, pretty standard operating, you know, procedure.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we should hold off on signing it and get the performance bond put into it, get that done.
Is that what we need to do, is modify this thing?
Well, I would just, I would just, you know, you could, we can certainly put it on the next agenda and just, you know, I can let them know that the board, you know, wants to, you know, enforce the performance bond, make sure it's enforced, you know, that it's going to be a requirement. I don't see it as being a problem, I don't see it being a deal breaker, you know.
You agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
You agree with that?
I mean, it's in the bylaws, and it's very common practice.
Yeah. Yes, I would say when, you know, when we're dealing, as we move forward, any vendors, make sure that they know ahead of time, so this isn't a surprise. Because if they've dealt with us in the past and they haven't had this, now we're changing it up a little bit.
Right. You know, it's different.
Yeah, but to be fair, it's something we should have been doing the whole time.
Oh, I agree, but, you know, but maybe people are used to not even knowing about it, you know.
You know, it's different if you're going out to, you know, purchase a vehicle, right? There's a warranty, you know, there's all these other things, you don't do that. This is on performance, all performance based, so, you know, construction, you know, even engineering is a performance, you know, the engineer's got to perform, and it's, you know, got to be, you know, credible.
Yeah, okay.
As a side note, that's why we have Jim here to tell us.
Keep us in check.
Yep.
He's our performance bond. Chief Lavoy, you had a question?
I was just going to say, I know 14, 15 years ago, when we had the station roof replaced at Station B, we ran into a huge issue where there was a major leak and everything like that, and at the time, I remember them, you know, trying to take the company to court, and there was a major issue that there wasn't a bond in place, so just for the, you know, that's one example I know from past in town where the town got kind of a raw deal because the company ended up going bankrupt, and there was a whole bunch of other things there, so it's probably, honestly, it's in the right, you know, in the best interest of the town.
We just want to make sure it gets done and gets done right. If not, we have a means to make sure it does. All right, so want to table this until the performance bond can?
Sure.
We'll do a motion?
Okay. Make a motion to table the approval of the contract with Weston and Sampson.
Second.
Pending a performance bond.
Pending a performance bond.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Vidi Vidi's, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously, we're going to be tabling it until we get a performance bond from Weston and Sampson. Working magic, sir.
All right, we'll get on it.
Okay. Number eight, communication from Mr. Bruce Martin, Board of Assessors, regarding two vacancies on the Board of Assessors, discussion impossible vote on interested candidates to serve on the Board of Assessors until the next town election. Okay. And then we have senior agreement, okay. Sir, come on up, introduce yourself, let's hear from you.
Hi, Bruce Martin, Board of Assessors. We have a few candidates that were interested and applied for the Board of Assessors. I'd like to recommend at least one that we have.
So the way the statute works is that, you know, because there's multiple vacancies on the Board of Assessors, it's really a joint venture between the selectmen and the Board of Assessors, since there's only one assessor left, that would be Bruce. He sent us a communication some time ago, over a week ago, that there's, you know, these vacancies. We've notified the public at our last meeting that we had, that there's, you know, multiple vacancies. We also posted it on the town's website that there's been vacancies. We've solicited letters of interest, we've posted it also on the Cable Access Channel, thank you Travis, and we also sent out a town alert soliciting for, to fill this, to fill these positions. You know, I think it's critically important that the board gets filled so that the office can then move forward. The office is kind of at a stalemate because we can't hire anybody because there's not a full board in place. We have been getting resumes and cover letters, I've been accepting them for the position. The board is going to have a significant amount of work to start reviewing those and going through those, and finding the best qualified candidate to fill that assistant assessor position. And then, you know, ultimately, this will fill this vacancy until the next town election in May. The person that you may select may decide to run for the position, or may not decide to run for the position, but it will require them, if they want to stay in the position, to run. It is an elected office. So there's two current vacancies, and I know that I also provided you with the copies of the letters of interest, I provided Bruce Martin, the remaining assessor, copies of the letters of interest as well, so that you guys both can review them and decide how you want to move forward. But Bruce would also have a, you know, a standing of a vote on this matter.
So the candidates we have are Joseph A. Condrat Jr., Michael Starziak, and Paula B. Keefe, and Karen Kelly Gurey. Say that way, Gurey?
Yes.
That's perfect. All right. So we have two positions, four candidates. Definitely crucial to fill these positions. As people know, we had some resignations recently in the Board of Assessors office, and we got to fill those positions now so we can also hire an assistant assessor for the town, which also resigned. So we have a lot to do here. Again, you know, did you introduce yourself? Just make sure.
I did real quick, again, again.
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors, all right, good. Okay, and right now, you're the only standing member of the Board of Staff.
The only standing member of the Board and the office itself.
Okay. It's a lot to do.
But we're managing, we're getting it done.
All right. So we have Mr. Joseph Condrat here, and we have Karen Kelly Gurey here. Is there anybody else present that's listed? No? Okay. All right. And did we get anything else from any of these individuals? I know Mr. Condrat provided a resume.
Mr. Chairman, I just, when the notice went out, we just said, you know, provide a letter of interest. I think it would be customary that if you wanted to, you could hear from anybody who's here, if they wanted to speak on it, you know, you can certainly, you know, ask for any, you know, questions or ask for their background.
Are you good with that? Hearing from the candidates?
Sure.
You good?
Yep.
Are you good, sir? Hearing for the candidates? Okay.
I'm just curious, does the Board of Assessors have recommendations?
Well, I think we should hear from the candidates first.
Okay.
And then your recommendation of what you'd like to see, and go from there.
Okay.
This way we give everybody a fair and equal opportunity before you make a decision beforehand in hearing the candidates.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So who wants to go first? Karen or Joe? Mr. Condrat, please introduce yourself.
Joe Condrat, resident.
Okay, so what can you tell us about yourself that makes you interested in wanting to be on the Board of Assessors?
Well, other than the fact that, first of all, I'm retired, so I have plenty of time. And the assessors are such an important position because they have to look at a property and determine its true value, not just what it could be sold for.
Do you have any questions for?
No, I don't.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any experience in the assessing department at all, or real estate background, anything of that nature?
Uh, no, I don't, no.
All right. All right. Do you have anything else to add?
The willingness to try anything and the ability to learn as I go along.
So you're willing to learn, you don't quite know the position, but you want to learn.
Yeah.
And there is training that's provided for the assessors, right?
There is, it's online right now, some of it, you may ask, depends where it is, but there is, yes, online, anything that happens. Next ethics course you have to pass, 101 you have to pass within a year, and our course is that has to be passed. There's time limits and constraints as well.
Very good. Okay. All right. And Mr. Condrat? Do you have anything else to add? You good?
I'm good.
All right.
Can I ask two questions?
Yes, sir.
That I thought of. So are you willing to take the training?
Yes.
And would you consider running for the position?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, you mean this run after this period ends, right?
Yeah. So this is a temporary appointed until May.
Oh, I thought you said we were going to take them down the track and have them run.
Yeah, those.
That too? All right.
No?
All right. All right, very good. Do you have any other questions?
No, I don't.
Do you have any?
No, sir.
Do you have any?
No.
Okay. All right. Now, you're up.
I'm up.
Please identify yourself.
I'm Karen Kelly Gurey.
Okay. So I did that close?
You did, you did it very well. I am interested in the position, I don't know a lot about it, but as you had said, I'm very willing to learn it. I feel my husband and I moved up here five years ago, and I've recently retired, and I want to get involved in town. I am on FinCom, which I think would be a good combination. I'm also on the library board. I'm not good at sitting around doing nothing. I am open to learning, and I am open to the training, definitely. If I'm, we do it immediately, just, I'd rather have more knowledge to start than learn it as I go along.
Okay, very good. Do you have any experience as an assessor? I'll follow Bruce's question.
I was going to say the same.
None.
None, what's over there? How about in real estate and in that nature?
My background is commercial insurance.
Commercial insurance, okay.
Do you have any questions?
Are you interested in running for the position?
I would if it doesn't, no shocking things come up between now and May. Yeah.
It is Warren, we can't promise that.
Yeah, I know.
All right.
I don't have questions for you either, I just have comments for both of you. First, I want to thank you for being here, because the first step is to be here, have the will to, you know, work for the town, it's a big one. And I never had experience being a selectman before, so I'm actually doing what you're about to do. And, you know, if you end up on the position, you know, you, the door is open, you can always ask us for help or, you know, how to do things, if you have, need help with the computer, you know, just knock the door, you know. I just want to thank you for being here. It's a tough position, it's difficult, and nothing is easy today, but, you know, that's my comment, you know, thank you for being here.
Mr. Martin?
I'd like to say the same thing as Derek himself, I'd like to thank both of you for being in here, showing interest, things in that nature. It is a job that you're going to have to be dedicated to for both parties, whoever gets the job, whoever would like it, but you're also going to have to be learning, be interested in going out, inspecting properties, answering phone calls, there's a lot of yelling, going back and forth, there's numbers, there's, there's, now, once again, we're aboard three with one, we're in office of two that has nobody in there. So we do need the help today, we need experience, we need people that are going to be willing and able to answer the phones, answer questions, look up the computers, things in that nature. I mean, there's a lot going on, and we have, and we do have a community in service, not just, we have a community that's calling every day, asking questions and stuff, and we're behind, we need to get the ball rolling and kind of get moving. So the more experience we have, the better off we're going to be for everything and every part.
Well, unfortunately, I think everybody here are just residents that are willing to volunteer and do their best.
That's what it is.
And that's, that's the first step.
And that nature, yes, everybody's here is willing to learn and interested, that's the main thing, as we said, we said, yes.
Do you have any questions, sir? Mr. Farrar?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. So, again, I think you're both great candidates, you know, you both already show your dedication to the town, and stepping up and helping out where you can and doing what you can. And, you know, we know Joe, he's been in a lot of our meetings, and he's been here and dedicated a lot of time, and he's willing to step up on subcommittees and stuff and help out with those, and you're willing to help out with FinCom and do that, because that's a big job, too. Sometimes you guys beat us up down here in the selectmen's room, so. But that's how towns work. You work together, you may not agree all the time, but you figure it out, and you make it happen for the best interests of our residents. And right now, we need to look at what's the best interest of our residents and our town, because we have nobody, well, except for Bruce, but we can't do much as one number.
We can't do it all as one person.
A board of one is no board, so.
This is true.
Well, do you have any other questions?
No.
Do you have recommendations?
I do have a recommendation, we do have Miss Paula Keefe who did write a letter, she was on the board before, she moved out of town, she moved back to town, she was an assessor over 30 years, so she would be a good qualified person, I believe, to be on the board, and I would make a recommendation to have her, because she is definitely like a sense she is. She was an assessor for thirty years. She had her own company. She was on the board before. She knows how things work. She was in the municipality and things in that nature. So, I think we'd have a good candidate with her as well.
Okay.
And while I'm here, I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but if I had any say in it, we need people today. We need somebody that can help and get into us and things of that nature. I would, without any disrespect towards anybody, I would think I'd like to have Karen maybe as part of it. I don't know, nor how to, oh, with, no disrespect or anything, but we're behind. We have to be able to answer the phone, get onto the computers, get into things in that nature. There is big numbers here. We're not talking just balancing a checkbook or anything in that nature. We're talking multiple numbers. So, we're being on the FinCom. I think that would be a big asset as well, too. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No disrespect to anybody, anything in that nature.
So, my actual recommendation is, I understand your recommendations, but I would actually like to see the two members sitting here because that actually shows that they're willing to do it. It shows their commitment, shows they're willing to learn. Not everybody knows everything. And sometimes when people have worked in a position for a very long time, they may have picked up bad habits during that time, too. So, having fresh minds and fresh opinions, willing to learn a job, is sometimes more of an advantage than to go the same old route. You know, I think, you know, Ms. Keith, you know, she's nice and everything. But we have two individuals here that are showing they're willing to do the work, and they seem pretty passionate. And that's half our battle right there. We just need people to be here.
We need people here, but we need people that are going to be involved and know what they're doing, too. We have to understand what the state says, what rules, regulations are, things in that nature, too. And Paula did ask if she could be here or if she needed to be here. I did tell her I would bring the letter and things in that nature, so I will take the fall for her not being here. She would have been here if we asked her to be here. So, I will take that responsibility.
Okay. Get anything else?
Well, I'm going to tend to go with Bruce's recommendations. I think having Paula come on, because they're down so many people, I think the experience is going to be very valuable to get back up and go. Which I, you know, I understand fresh ideas, but at this point, if it was a stable board and there were two stable members, then having somebody come on as a third member with fresh ideas, I would, that would be great. But I think this is, you know, a situation where it's kind of an emergency to get this going again.
And I'm all for new people. There's no if, ands, or buts. We, Rich, we don't have time for training someone new. We don't, we have a bunch of people calling 24 hours, seven days a week that the tax rate went out. There's so many questions to be answered, so many things to be done that has to still be done. It's just, it's, we're way behind. We're way behind.
So, Bruce has experience, obviously. Paula has experience. And then the other person coming on would be the newbie. So, at least you have two people to support the third person.
Okay. Karen?
Joe, you've been here in almost every meeting. You've been learning a lot. I have the feeling you struggle a little bit with technology and the computers, and they use the computer a lot. I can see saving you for something else special. So, don't feel bad if you don't end up on this, on one of these positions. I know you're willing to help, but I'm sure, you know, life heavenly father and everything, it has something special for you if you end up over here. But I do feel like I know what the assessors have to do. I know the software. I know all the numbers and everything. I don't want to have you, you know, struggle at the beginning too much because you're a good guy and we may need you in something else. I do like the benefit that you have being on FinCom because the numbers on the assessors' offices is crucial. And, you know, basically, you know, the experience of, this is, what's his name? Paula Keith? I think, you know, at least someone, you know, even if it learned the process a different way or somehow, may bring good things and bad things, but it has that feature. Remember, you guys have to go out, measure, estimate, take calls. Someone's going to call, hey, how much is my property? You know, or, you know, things like those. And then you have to do all these big reports to the state. It's a difficult task. So, I, I think, Joe, honestly, I think we are saving you for something better. No problem.
So, what about Michael Starzak?
I don't know if I've heard of him personally or anything in that nature. I did read a letter real quickly, but that's all I know that he's a guy.
Do you have any comments about Mr. Starzak?
Yeah. It's hard to say because he's not hearing stuff. Although, based on his letter, if he doesn't get this, then there's other things to do.
Yeah. He definitely, he wants to be doing something in town.
Yeah.
So, there's always other positions coming up, too, so.
Did you spell his last name? S.T.A.R.S.I.A.K. Starzak.
So, do you have recommendations?
One minute. No, Facebook. He, we have a friend in common, so I'm just looking on there. Making the connections very quickly. Well, I think I'll follow Mr. Martin's recommendation, you know, and have, sorry, I'm really terrible with the names. Karen and Paula.
Paula.
Yeah. So, you know, and say, Michael and Joe for something special next.
Okay. So, I'm outvoted so far. And we do live in a democracy, and you guys seem to got the majority, so.
Any disagreements on this?
I know. It's surprising. We do just, I think Joe's an awesome candidate in looking at his resume.
His resume is good.
He's, his resume is good. Computer skills. Look at those fonts. Okay? He knows how to put together a letter. So.
There's a lot of things coming in the mail, and I think he's going to be very helpful over there because he worked there.
There's a big, big, big couple of things. We got the, you know, the master plan's going to be coming up. There's going to be a committee on that.
We got a lot of committees coming up here.
We have a committee on the police, police station. He served on the review committee. There's going to be, you know, there's going to be public safety committee coming down the pike. You know, there's going to be a lot of things that are, a lot are going to be looking for volunteers and looking for people to be interested in.
Every single piece of the puzzle is important. We just have to know where they go.
And I got to say, you can tell a lot by a person from their signature. And your signature, your signature is beautiful. Okay? Your handwriting is amazing. Okay? And I'll give you that, Joe.
I agree.
I'm just saying. I write like an eight-year-old with a crayon. Okay? That's, that's my handwriting. And you're, I admire people when they handwrite something and it's beautiful. Rich?
Yeah.
Some of us who have lack of a signature.
Come on.
That's okay. That's my signature at work, too, from signing so many things. Yes, sir.
That was six years at St. Thomas Aquinas.
It shows. The nuns, huh?
Oh, and you don't.
Roller in the hand?
Owen Powell.
Oh. Yep. No, it's, you did a great job with that. Again, we do have other things. You've been awesome, helping out with the, helping us out with some of these committees and stuff, too. And you're a big part of our town, and there's going to be more for you, so. But it seems like I'm outvoted.
No problem.
Do you have anything to add?
No, sir. Nope.
You're staying away from this one, huh? All right. So, you get your, your two people that you're putting forward?
So, we can have sworn in as soon as possible.
Let's do a motion, and the four of us are going to vote on this one. Okay? And it's a roll call because it's video, so you're going to have to say your name and whether you approve or not.
Position, too, just so it's.
Individually, yep.
Yep. Okay. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Paula Keith and Karen Kelly-Garray to the Board of Assessors. Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, selectman, aye. Derek Billy, selectman, aye.
David Dufresne, selectman, aye.
Bruce Martin, Board of Assessors, aye.
Okay. So, the motion is unanimous, and the, they are approved.
Okay.
So, next step is for us to appoint you. And do we have appointment letters yet? No? Okay. So, we'll do the appointment. Yeah. We'll do the appointment letters, and you guys have to get sworn in. And you have to do the, well, you already did the ethics part. So, you have that. That carries it over. So, she's already headed on that one. But congratulations. Sorry, we got to pull your wife away from you for a little longer here to help out the town, but it's a good cause, right?
Keeps her happy.
Happy wife is happy.
So, there's some additional paperwork that we'll have to have you fill out, some policies and different things and, you know.
On Monday tomorrow?
Yep. Or on Monday. Yep. Either one.
Either one's good.
Okay. Um, I don't know. Will we have the appointment letter ready?
I can just wait till Monday.
Oh, I can have the letter by.
Let's do it Monday because then you can get sworn in on Monday.
Yeah. Because nobody's going to be here to swear in.
Right. Okay.
So, they both can start on Monday?
Right.
Effectively, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you get the appointment letters, we can just stop and just let us know. And we can sign them. They're approved. We just got to come in and do our signature. Okay. All right. Okay. The next one is review and possible vote on senior property tax work-off abatement and application for Leona A. Rubel, Diane Holger, and Karen Wilks. Okay. So, these are historical things that you put in for the other towns?
Right. Yeah. Because we talked, we discussed.
What the rate is.
We only pay them eight dollars an hour. But as I was reading, it says they have to get minimum wage.
Well, minimum wage just went up, too, in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
As of the first of the year.
To fifteen.
Fifteen. Yeah.
So, they have to be paid minimum wage, and then you can decide anywhere from zero to fifteen hundred. So, that's one decision.
That they could work off up to?
Up to.
Up to fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay. So, we have two votes here. Is, well. We actually have three. What do we have to do each of them individually to accept them into the senior property abatement program?
Yes. Individually, yep.
So, what we should do is set the standards. And we could do a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars, correct? I'm good with the maximum of fifteen hundred dollars to work off for the prop, the abatement. We're getting.
Which are, which minimum wage?
It's fifteen. In Massachusetts.
That's a hundred hours. So, we previously said sixty-two and a half, so up it by forty dollars?
If they want the maximum.
If they want the maximum.
Oh, so they have to work less?
Well, they could.
Are they have to work?
They'd have to work more.
No. He's saying if they work less, then they would get less in their abatement.
Yes.
So, they work what they can up to?
Up to fifteen. Yeah. It's fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Which would be the amount they get in, how many hours they work, up to fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay. So, if they work fifty hours, they get fifteen times fifteen, but the max would be a hundred hours for the fifteen hundred dollars.
You did that, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Farrar?
Well, the town's policy is, has been, is that they signed that they understand that there's no partial credit will be issued and that the credit shall not be carried over for the following year. So, I don't know if you, if you, if you only worked partially, would you only get partial amount of money?
But I think we need to change all of those because if you look at the top, it says the earnings committee get five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, all of those applications have to be redone when we make, when the board makes that decision.
Well, yeah. This is, this is, this is for a December 31st deadline. So, this was the, this was the policy as of December 31st when these people applied. So, would this be for next cycle? Or are you going to change it for?
Well, we have to change it because we have to change, we have to pay them fifteen dollars an hour. We can't pay them eight dollars an hour. So, either the five hundred has to change, so we have to do fifteen times sixty-two point five and get that number, or we have to, we have to pay them the fifteen dollars. We don't have a choice.
So, I would recommend that, you know, you know, trying to get something that's, that's an equal, you know, program. So, you know, I would anticipate that, you know, if we go up to the maximum, you will, you could see an onslaught of applications for this moving forward. And these applications are not, not to hinder people, but, but we have to make sure that we have enough, number, number one, work to, for these people to do and that they're qualified to do the work within these departments and that there's a need for it. You know, some departments may say that it's, it's not necessary to have because they, you know, they feel as though that maybe it's, it's too much time to train somebody to get somebody to do it type of deal. So, that would be my only caution with going up to the maximal. You may want to consider a, you know, the 750 range, a modest increase, you know, along with, you know, you know, the hours should be the, you know, whatever hours. I, you know, getting half credits, it's going to be, you know, it's trying to determine it and then, then having the proper paperwork and.
So, if you keep the hours at sixty-two point five hours, you're looking at nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. If you keep it at the five hundred amount and you look at fifteen dollars, that's thirty-three.
Which isn't really a lot.
So, if you did fifty hours at fifteen dollars an hour, that's seven fifty.
But the thing is, if a lot of people apply, then it might be more fair to go to the five hundred max because then we could, people would come on, work through their five hundred. The next person could come in, work on their five hundred, give more people a chance to participate.
But we've only ever had three or four people max that have applied every year. Last year, we had three.
You'll probably see an increase in applications as, you know, as the program, you know, gets, as the credit increases, is my guess.
I think, I think if we go the seven fifty route and we're getting fifty hours out of them.
That's.
That's, that's fair.
Sure.
Because then it's worth doing. You know, it gives others a chance to do it in fifty hours. You know, it gives others a chance to do it, and fifty hours is doable. And we can justify fifty hours, 'cause I know Leona helps out a lot in different areas. You know, these people do help out, and we've never really had a lot of people doing this. And there are requirements, you know, to be able to qualify for this. So I think if we set seven fifty for a maximum of, you know, well, fifteen dollars an hour for a maximum of seven fifty, which is fifty hours.
So the person's getting a- this program's working in their benefit, it's less hours that you have to do, and you're gonna get more of a credit?
Correct.
And it definitely helps them out more, too. They're actually working less hours now.
Right.
And they're getting more of a credit.
Correct.
So it's doable with their senior population.
Maybe you'll get more applications because of that.
Any questions?
Nope, is this Bev?
Yes.
Okay. Just introduce yourself, Bev.
Beth Holt is Lauren. Is it mandated that it has to be the state minimum wage? 'Cause years ago, it was told to me, and I've got it written down here, that it was- that you could actually go by the federal minimum wage, which is, of course, a lot less.
Well, it's Massachusetts, we're a municipality in Massachusetts, so we would have to go by the state.
But is that written somewhere?
Mass law.
Is that what other towns do, go by the state?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what are all the towns paying? I didn't hear what you had to say.
Well, these are old numbers, and they were fourteen twenty-five per hour. And Weir, West Brookfield doesn't have it, Barry is fourteen twenty-five, Brynfield's fourteen twenty-five, North Brookfield is fourteen twenty-five. And these are all last year's numbers.
Oh, so you didn't get this year's numbers from those towns?
The state, no, because the state minimum wage now is fifteen dollars an hour as of January first.
Okay.
Well, wasn't the state minimum wage last year fourteen fifty?
No, fourteen twenty-five.
Fourteen twenty-five.
Going up to fifteen fifty.
Can I ask you a question, Bev?
February was seven twenty-five.
Yeah. That's-
According to Mass Law, what we have to do?
Okay, and I'm good with fifteen. You know, they're working, they're doing their time, they're here, it's not like they're sitting there and just sitting in a chair and not doing anything. They're actually working and doing stuff. You have any questions?
No.
No, sir. And so these would be the only applicants for this year, because they got in before December thirty-first. We're still keeping the deadline with December thirty-first, right?
Correct.
Yep. So, alright, so we'll do a motion. We're gonna have to do a couple.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept Leona Rubel's application for senior tax- senior property tax work-off abatement.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Diddy Billy, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to approve Diane Holier for the senior property tax work-off abatement program.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Diddy Billy, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to accept Karen Wilks for the senior property-
Karen Wilk.
Wilk, no, sorry.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Karen Wilk for the senior property tax work-off abatement.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Diddy Billy, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Then accept the- go do a motion to accept the minimum wage.
Oh, okay, so I'll make a motion to change the senior property tax work-off abatement program to use the minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour and a maximum earned of seventy-five dollars.
At fifty dollars an hour. I mean fifty dollars, at fifty hours, yeah. Fifty hours, yeah, fifty hours.
So rephrase that one.
No, I said fifty hours.
Yeah, but we just went back and forth with those, we just rephrased it, so we all-
So I'll make a motion to modify the senior property tax work-off abatement program to use fifteen dollars per hour, the Massachusetts minimum wage, for a maximum of fifty hours, equaling seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Diddy Billy, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. Now that is fixed, anything else? Good on that?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, discussion and possible authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Porter Road Pet Care, East Long Meadow, for the boarding of animals that are in the custody of the animal control officer. Okay? We have nothing in here. Okay, and there is no gain financially for the ACO, correct? So because there's no gain financially in the family, I don't have to recuse myself, because it's animal control. If there was a gain financially, because again, the animal control officer is my wife, I would have to recuse myself, but this is purely a clerical decision on where to house animals.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, as the town has been grappling with trying to find a, you know, a suitable holding facility for animals that come into the custody of our- of our ACO, we've been trying to, I've worked with our ACO, we're trying to work out an arrangement with Palmer. Palmer has been- have been in the throes of getting a new facility up and running. They recently just opened up a new facility in Munson. It's a- it's a collaboration between Weir, Palmer, and Munson. But they- they had indicated to us that they would be willing to negotiate or talk to us about some type of- of an inter municipal agreement, so that we would have the ability to bring animals that- that come into the custody of our ACO to a facility. That- that- that type of agreement has stalled, it's taken some time. They've- they've just recently got into their new facility. They haven't responded back as of yet, as to saying, "Yeah, let's go." So in the interim, I've reached out to some neighboring other communities, and one of the neighboring other communities was the town of Wilbraham. And the town of Wilbraham ACO has a- is a- owns a facility in East Long Meadow, and it's called Porter Road Pet Care. Porter Road Pet Care is a- is a- is a facility in which the ACO in Wilbraham brings animals to there for custody purposes for the town of Wilbraham. The town of East Long Meadow brings their animals in custody to this facility. The town of Long Meadow brings the- the custody of these animals to East Long Meadow. It's about a seventeen-mile difference from here to there. You know, when speaking with our ACO, she had actually had spoken to this gentleman, the ACO in Wilbraham, previously, some- some time ago. He was very receptive and willing to help us out in the interim. He had indicated that, you know, he would be able to work with our ACO, to show her, you know, some- some areas in which these animals could be housed, and- and how his facility works, his facility. He lives at the facility, and he has staff at the facility, so there's never a question as to when these animals could be transported to the facility. It seemed like a real promising opportunity. We had a conference call last week, myself, the ACO, and this gentleman who owns Porter Road. It was very promising. I wanted to report this back to the board, and to see if the board was interested in possibly working out some type of- of an arrangement with this facility. They said that they would charge modest twenty dollars a day for- for holding of animals. It would be thirty dollars a day if somebody came and claimed the animal, and that would include the care and custody of the animal while- while it was there, you know, the feeding of it. I think that's reasonable. The drawback is, you know, the drive out there, I mean, it's- it's a little bit of a drive. But, you know, it would appear that the- the ACO was comfortable with that as just somewhere to bring an animal at this particular time. We don't have a- a place to- to house an animal currently. So I- I'm hopeful that, you know, maybe Palmer will come back around, and we can, you know, once they've been on operation a little bit longer, we can work out a- a more reasonable type of- of an arrangement. But currently, for, you know, emergency purposes, this would be a possibility. And I- I could also check in, if- if the board is not keen with- with this situation, I could also check with- with Springfield at the Thomas J. O'Connor, TJO, Thomas J. O'Connor Center in Springfield, and see if they would be able to do something. That's a little bit further of a- of a- of a hike. But, you know, this is an option. If the board wants to- to allow me to- to talk and to try to draft up some- some type of formal, you know, proposal, I certainly could do that, but I wanted to report this to the board, and try to seek the board's direction as to how they want me to proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Did you mention, how many times does the ACO need to board an animal?
So I had asked the ACO, I said, you know, how many animals did you- did you, you know, have to board, you know, you know, throughout the course of a year? And she- she said, you know, depending on the year, it varies, but, you know, maybe seven or eight? No, the entire year.
So in other words, the drive to East Long Meadow, although, you know, is upwards of maybe forty minutes, if it's only-
To consider, because I did the numbers, you know, thirty-four miles, you know, it's going there and coming back.
Yeah.
At three fifty a gallon, you know, real- I did all my calculations, plus the eighty cents per mile and everything. It's about thirty-four bucks for each trip.
Thirty-four dollars? What are you driving?
This is not the problem. Well, your average car can take about twenty miles to a gallon.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not a lot of money, right?
Plus, the, you know, if you take, you know, normally, somebody who drives towards that place charges the miles, and it's between fifty cents and eighty cents. And that, it's an average of thirty-four dollars a trip.
Okay.
So just keeping in mind, times seven or eight?
Think your math's off.
Why?
'Cause I think you're charging a gallon per mile.
It's two gallons to go there and coming back. So you have thirty-four. If you had, if it was-
It's two gallons, so that would be seven dollars.
Yeah, seven dollars, plus the eighty cents per mile.
The government-
That's typically what companies pay the employees.
The government pays sixty-two point five.
Yeah, but she has an ACO vehicle.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to see the big picture, how much it will cost, because there's vehicle appreciation, there's everything that, you know, just an a- a virtual average of what it would cost.
Yeah, well, she has an ACO vehicle, so she wouldn't get mileage, 'cause she's not using her own vehicle. And she's-
But I think that like the six-
She's a paid, well, not, she's not really an hourly employee, so she doesn't get hourly rate or anything like that, she gets stipend. Which is, I think she gets, I think it's six thousand dollars a year or some, what is it?
Yeah, yes.
So-
Well, I think like the eighty cents a mile also covers, I mean, you're gonna have oil changes, you're gonna have tires, you know, et cetera. So that's sort of an average number of-
Yeah.
So, you know, she's putting a little more mileage on the vehicle, so oil changes will come quicker.
Just to go see the tires.
Tires will come quicker.
You know, it sounds like, yeah, it's seventeen miles, really, it could be forty miles, depending where in the town she is, and, you know, going and back and coming forth, so. So you add that together, eight a year, you know?
So see- seeing what happens there, and seeing what happens when a vehicle, uh, vehicle, an animal is taken in. You know, it happens at all times, in day and night. Right now, there is no current location to take them. I know personally, she has called all around to all the different ACOs to see where they bring their animals. And actually, a lot of them kind of perked up and like, "Well, I don't have a place to take them anymore. I don't have a place to bring them." And one of the places was, it was an old place, Wickabog used to actually take animals, and they no longer take animals. So that was kind of an option. And then the shelter she was using here in town, their fault. So they're- they're focusing more on their training of the animals versus shelter. So that kind of leaves the town without any ability to house an animal. Some of these animals are left out in the cold, abused animals, and she needs to take custody of them and bring them somewhere, or they're just a lost dog that nobody has accepted. So she has to bring that animal somewhere. Having a- a place to bring, because, you know, there's variations of dogs. You have little tiny dogs with really ticked-off attitudes that wanna bite everything, and then you have big mastiffs, who are big cuddle muddies, you know? So you have a variety of sizes and personalities, and sometimes you have animals that may have special needs. So you need to have a place to bring them, too. We can't bring them here. Police departments, it's not their responsibility to take them on and watch these animals. So there's no way to bring them, so we have to have someplace to bring these animals. Unfortunately, a lot of places and a lot of towns, when they do their budgets, they don't think about this stuff. They don't think about, okay, these animals that may be picked up in a house that are really bad conditions, or say, the resident of the home passed away. Now you have to place that animal, because there's no next of kin accepting the animal. We don't have any way to put them. So with the due diligence that I've seen gone into it, there's just not a lot of places anymore. For cats, you know, the ACO is good for cats, because she has a place that takes in cats, which is great, which a lot of ACOs don't do, they just don't deal with cats at all. She actually does take the time to get the cats off- off the streets and get them spayed and neutered, especially a lot of the cats that have been abandoned, and that happens a lot, and then they have cats. And their kittens have cats, and it becomes a big population in an area, so it's important to get them spayed and neutered. And she's been focusing on that, because they are doing damage to people's properties. They're very bad for wildlife within the towns, because they catch the chipmunks and squirrels and all these other things that we have running around, and they decimate populations of them, because nobody's feeding them. So you have to kind of keep the population down. But with dogs, we just have nowhere to bring them. And that's becoming a big problem, because unfortunately, we have animal cruelty cases in town. And unfortunately, people do pass away, and their animals are left in the house, and there's no way to bring them. And you have to maintain them till a next- next of kin can- And you have to maintain them until a next, next of kin can claim that animal. And that could be a day, could be a week. So there's different things you gotta do. In animal cruelty cases, when you take that animal, that animal becomes property of the town until the case is resolved. And that can go on for months. So not having a place or a facility that could do that, we're in a, a situation, having a good agreement with someplace is important because we can't foster an animal like that, especially if it's an abused animal. The animal might show some sort of aggressive tendencies, and to foster that animal would be bad. So.
But this is a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Don't, don't take me wrong when I'm doing the math. I just want the public to know that we're doing things here, like the animal inspector's going to take a hit, she's going to have to drive all the way over there. We're working harder to, you know, be a better town. That's what I'm trying to bring some conscience of, you know, this is, we're just spending more money and working harder every day.
So I think the best thing, we're in budget season, is she should just factor in maybe ten visits, I don't know, to that shelter, right?
One a month?
Yeah. So figure out the, the gas and the time and whatever, maintenance on the vehicle, you know, wear and tear.
We did increase the expect, expense line at the special, so in anticipation, you know, of, you know.
Yeah, as long as it can cover, you know, X number of trips. And then I think it's worth still keeping your ears open. You know, maybe there's something in, I don't know, you know, East Brookfield or Spencer or Stirbridge, you know, that might be a little closer. And frankly, it'd be good to have two or three places, really.
Yeah, as a backup, yeah.
Yeah, as a backup. Because right now, we have to place a warrant with no backup.
Right.
Now we're stuck, so.
Right.
You know, maybe this place in Springfield too, like you mentioned.
So I can, I can put together like a little memo, random of understanding. You know, I'll call the gentleman back, get some additional information from him, and then present it to you guys, you know, for, you know, final consideration, if that's what you want to do.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
You gotta do something, you gotta put them somewhere.
Yep.
And right now, there's nothing.
All right.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
That, right? Okay, so what do we? What's our motion?
So make a motion to enter into a memorandum of under, allowing the town administrator to enter into it a memorandum of understanding with Order of Road Pet Care East Long Meadow for the boarding of animals that are in the custody of the ACO.
So moves. Set it.
All in favor.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Dilly Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Did you get all that?
No.
You got the approval, so thank you.
It's called recording.
All right. Discussion and possible. Discussion on possible town, town common improvements, okay?
So this was also brought up at CDAC.
Yeah.
So I know that Rich wanted to see, you know, have this on the agenda, you know, for continued discussion. I think there's going to be a future meeting to start the discussion now and then.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we were just going to kind of open up the mention.
Right, right.
So what we'd like to do is like have parks here and then just, you know, kind of talk back and forth about what we'd like to see on the town common.
So maybe we could set up a date and invite parks in to a.
Yeah. Yeah, because we definitely have to do something with the town common because right now it's overgrown with trees. They need to open that up a little bit. Highway Department, you know, acknowledge that they'd be able to do that, but there's also going to have to be a lot of loom and a lot of other things in there. There's a, a water feature that's there that hasn't worked in many years, and that needs to be fixed. You know, making it more accessible, increasing parking. Mr. Belize did an awesome design of what that could look like and what it would be down there. You know, I'd love to see something like that. The only thing I would add in there is maybe some, some spots to park bicycles because people ride their bikes if we have a couple bicycle racks in there to, to park bicycles in there. And the other thing I'd like to see is a walkway that goes through the center to the gazebo. We have those lights that we took off the bridge, and it'd be nice to give those to the school, to the electrical students, and see if they can redo them with LED lights, and we can put posts in there and repurpose those lights because they are from the old bridge, and put those as, in the walkway to.
Yeah, that's great.
Look nice. So there's options. We gotta get parks here too and have a big conversation with them and see what they would like to have in there too.
Maybe highway too.
Yeah. Yeah, because they'd be maintaining it.
They'd be maintaining it.
So yeah, if we could do that. Because one of the goals is they have like, everybody keeps on bringing up that they would love to see, you know, farm stands and doing like.
Farmers markets.
Farmers markets. And we don't have places to do that. But if we could do that there, add some parking spots along, along that common park, open up a little more so you can have that inside there, we could hold farmers markets inside there. Because we did the Christmas thing, went great. One of the things that, my only complaint about that whole thing was the roots. There's a lot of roots that are sticking up along inside there, and I've seen people tripping over roots when you were going through the park. So, you know, these are things we have to work on and make sure that everything's cleared up and doable. You know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in there, but it's, it's a resource that we have, and it's the center of our town. You know, back, a while back, we were talking about how we had this big, beautiful center in the common, and then they put the bridge in, and then they put the loader in, and it took all that land away. And now we've got a sliver, but it's still our center of the town. We're going to do something with it. Make it look good. So yeah, if we could organize something with Parks and Highway Department. And I would say Chris Dumpty too.
Sure.
Because he was looking into it, and he was asking about this, and see if we can get grants to help out with this.
So do you want to, so maybe next week is, if we're going to invite Chris too, then maybe next week isn't so good, but maybe the twenty-sixth?
Sure.
Because we're out on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, right.
For the MMA thing.
So we'll get the twenty-sixth for doing all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You good with that?
I'm good.
Do you have any comments?
I'm excited.
Do you have any comments?
My imagination starts flying.
No, you did an awesome design, and I know we showed it in meetings in the past, and it's been a while since we showed it.
Well, I think we have to do like a storm of ideas and then think about a master plan, what will be a deal, all wishes and hear and pull our resources and see what, what can we really do at this.
It's exciting. All right. So that was it. Anybody have any questions about that? Or questions, concerns about the common? Senator? So we'll move on to warrants and bills. And you can make your motion, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number sixty-one payroll, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Number sixty-two vendor, sixty-four thousand, three hundred, seventy-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. We are going to void number sixty-three warrant. Warrant number sixty-four for payroll, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred, forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Number sixty-five vendor, fifty-two thousand, four hundred, sixty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second?
All in favor.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Dilly Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. Excuse me, the motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Bills?
Northeast IT, well, I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Northeast IT, six thousand, two hundred, fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Maya, sixteen hundred, fourteen dollars. KP Law, five thousand, four hundred, sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Kelco Products, five hundred, one dollars and eighty cents. Verizon, a hundred and thirty-four and forty-two cents. National Grid, eighty-nine, ten. Valid Communications, a hundred and seventy-six. Marlin Leasing Corp, eleven hundred, seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Heinridge Technologies, thirteen hundred, eighty-eight dollars. Comcast, twenty, twenty-six. CMG. Oh, look, it's Chris Dumpty. CMG Colonial Municipal Group, seventy-four thousand, five hundred, eighty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Ken's Auto Sales, ten thousand, two hundred, eighty-seven dollars.
Those are already coming from ARPA money, that, that, those are already approved through ARPA money, so I mean, you know.
Which ones?
So the last two that you just read off, CMG.
Tammy asked me to make sure that they read them off and approve it. So the last two are ARPA.
Yeah, okay. Do I need a separate motion for those?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're not normal, they're not going to be under regular bills. They're, they're coming from ARPA funds, already approved ARPA funds.
So we'll re, we'll reread those bills, pay them, but just strike them for now and then just reread those.
Yeah. So I'm going to stop at Comcast.
Yeah, we're striking CMG Colonial Municipal, Municipal Group and striking Ken's Auto Sales Inc. Okay?
All right, so that's my motion.
Second?
All in favor.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Dilly Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And make the other two motions.
Yeah, although I'll say, we already made motions for this.
We did, but if, it doesn't hurt to just.
We set it aside. This is actually paying the bill.
Oh, okay, all right. I'll make a motion to pay the following bills from ARPA money. CMG Colonial Municipal Group, seventy-four thousand, five hundred, eighty-eight dollars and forty-four, forty-five cents. Ken's Auto Sales, ten thousand, two hundred, eighty-seven dollars.
Second?
All in favor.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Dilly Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And pay our bills. And the last bill, it's a Zoom bill, and I make a motion to pay the Zoom bill to reimburse, Mrs. Joyce Ihocker for the Zoom account in the amount of fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second?
All in favor.
Dilly Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
I abstain.
And the motion passes unanimously. And we have no minutes. Town Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I want to report on tonight from our last meeting. Happy New Year, everybody. We have scheduled next week in town on the twelfth. Tyler Technologies is coming in, so this will be the final presentation for the financial software. So all three, all, we'll have at least the opportunity to have the department have seen three different softwares. This will be on Thursday, the twelfth. They will be here live in, in the, in the building. They're going to start the presentation at nine and work all the way up till four-thirty. Tyler Technology acquired Munis. So they, the town will have seen Munis, the town will have seen Vedar, the town will have seen QDS. And we've got this out to the finance departments in building and planning as well. They do it all in one, this organization. So they will have, make presentations according, you know, for the finance, for the treasurer's office, the accountant, the tax collector, the assessors in building and planning, they do a function there too as well that they can encode, that they can interface with. So they'll be making that presentation next Thursday.
It's at nine?
At nine, starting at nine, yep. And then we'll run all day.
Put that on your calendar.
Next is that, as reported, you know, we have vacancies in the assessors, the Board of Assessors, and in the Board of Health for staff, staffing vacancies. Besides, you know, the, thank you for filling the vacancies on the boards, we have staffing vacancies in both departments. I've worked with the Board of Health. We had over seventy applicants for the position of, of Board of Health Support Secretary for the Board of Health. That was a, a pretty big task. I was surprised at the, the level of, of responses that we received from them for that position. We had five scheduled interviews last night with the, with the board members. Four showed up, and I'm hopeful that, that a selection can be made from, from one of the four. And I'll be continuing to work with the, with the Board of Health to get that person onboarded and set up in the office. One of the things that was really helpful as, when Brianna had, before she had left, she'd put a roadmap together, a file that she'd given to me of, of things that she wanted to make sure the next person in her shoes, you know, has on, on record. And she also stated to the town that she would be willing to come in on, you know, a few Saturdays, not every Saturday, but a few Saturday mornings to get this new person acclimated with the office for a few hours. So, you know, I think that's critically important to have that. And, you know, obviously, we could work it out with the new hire where they, you know, would, you know, leave a little earlier on Thursday, and then in anticipation of coming in on Saturday, we would work it out that they, you know, that they wouldn't go over their, their amount of hours that is budgeted for. So that would be, that would be really helpful to, to us, you know, and Brianna said that she could do it a couple Saturdays, but she can't commit to anything more than that, and she'd be willing to, to help us out on that. So I think, you know, I think it would be wise for the town to take her up on that and to see if we can do that. The, the Board of Assessors, we have not as many applicants because it's a, it's a, it's a, a unique field of unique qualifications, but we, we do have, I would say, anywhere between twelve to fifteen applicants that have applied that now the, the board that has been now created by you guys will have to review. And I will be working with them to set up a, a proper meeting so that I can give them all of the resumes and cover letters so that they can continue to, to start the review process. And because it's critical that we get the, you know, the office up and running there. I met this morning extensively with Don Swistak, our treasurer, and Tammy Martin, our accountant. We are drafting, and we have drafted a real rough draft, we'll have it for you for next meeting, petty cash policy. Okay, the town never had a petty cash policy. And, you know, with the onslaught of, of, you know, people having to use funds to, you know, go to the post office, send something certified mail, you know, in case of an emergency, there really needs to be a, a policy in place. We pulled petty cash from departments right now. The only departments that have it, that's critical, is the police in building and planning because they have permits that need to get out. But we've done an accounting of, of, of all of the petty cash, and we're going to have a policy, and we're going to roll it out. We will be taking back the petty cash from, from police in, in, in planning for a short period of time, for maybe like a couple hours during one day, then reissuing it, you know, a few hours later, once the policy's been approved by the Board of Selectment, if they show, choose to have a policy. Some boards, they, they, they may not want to, they may want to do away with petty cash. But if you guys feel as though it's necessary, then we should have a policy in place. And we will have that draft for you next Thursday for your review. Moving right along with the keyless entry system that has been installed, fire integration and security have been in here the last couple weeks. They've been installing the new system. And there's some, there's some areas in which it's not a hundred percent complete yet. And there's some, um, there's some areas in which it's not a hundred percent complete yet, so we're not live as of yet. Uh, we're, 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 we're still in, in, like, a very early test phase because the, the third door down by the, the gym area, there's a part that needs to be ordered that is on backward, they're trying to finagle a way in which they can do a crash bar for the, for the, that back door, because it's a little different door than, than these two doors. There's still some, a couple adjustments that need to be made on, on both of the doors. Um, as, you know, you can hear that they do slam a little bit heavier. Um, and it's because of the, um, the, the, the weight of the, of the, of the impact of the bar at the top, the, the, the metal bar that's up top, the magnetic. Yeah, it just needs to be adjusted. So, they're going to have to, they're going to come back, they have to put another, um, a switch on the ADA accessibility thing, um, that they had talked about, um, just the other day, Karen, right before they left. They're going to come and do another switch. So, there's a couple of minor things that they, that they have to finish. Karen has been so helpful with getting, uh, the, identifying all of the employees' boards that have to be issued these cards. Um, and we're, we're running test phases, as, as you can see, um, with prototypes as to how you want to select the, uh, the cards. Um, there's some prototypes there for the board to look at. And it's, it's, I think it's going to be a really useful tool for, for the town. Um, the software's going to take some time to learning. Uh, Brian, uh, from Fire Integrated Systems is going to come back with his, one of his staff, um, to, um, to give us a full training on it, some, some more in-depth. He wants us to kind of play around with it, test it out a little bit, see how it works. I know Karen's gotten some training on it already. But it's, um, it's, it's in the process, it should be completed, you know, relatively soon. Um, but the critical thing, and before we go fully implement live, make sure everybody has, you know, a key available. We got to make sure that the, uh, police and fire, that there's a key in the, the knock boxes as well. Um, you know, a digital key as well as a hard key, uh, in there as well. So, um, that, that's been moving right along. I do, uh, want to report on a couple other matters. Uh, one matter is, is that we have some, um, vacant property in town that the town, that the town has received title to, uh, and has been having title to. Uh, ten sixty-one Main Street, ten fifty-nine Main Street, and thirty-eight Maple Street. Those were properties that the town had acquired some time ago, prior to me coming here, um, through either a tax title process, um, or foreclosure, uh, process of some means. Um, it, it, it has been, the town has, in the past, insured the properties, okay, uh, for, uh, insurance purposes. Um, it is my goal to get these properties back on the tax rolls quick. So, it's a goal to try to, in the spring, to try to market these properties, get these back on there, turn them around as quickly as can, be for two reasons. Obviously, uh, the first reason is, is to, to get some funds into town, into the coffers, but also to get them back on the tax rolls so that people that may, may have an interest in investing or, or developing those areas, um, you know, they can, you know, work on their projects and, and so forth. Um, and I think that, that those would be critical, um, to, to get those back on and, and taxes, then start being paid, then we wouldn't have to pay for insurance moving forward. Right now, there's a, uh, there's a, the coverage renewal page had come in. Um, I was in the process of, of talking with, uh, our representatives from Maya. They are looking at twenty-four hundred dollars, uh, two thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-two cents to, to have the coverages on those properties. Um, you know, I, I, I would recommend that, you know, we, we could do it with a general liability, uh, uh, coverage, uh, you know, we could cut that back to eight hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. And then we would just have a general liability, uh, coverage on, on the properties. I don't think we need, uh, an extensive amount of, of, of coverage on the, on those buildings right now, especially if we're going to try to get rid of them in the spring. And then we could also, this, this policy's not due to be signed until March first. We just got it in yesterday. So, it's anticipation that, that this would be, you know, signed by the board at some point, um, authorized by the board at some point. And then, then we would, um, you know, in the springtime, we would still, we still have our, our, our coverage, our liability coverage, until the properties are off our hands. Um, and then we could apply, file for a, uh, an abatement for the, for the premium. Um, so that, you know, if we sell the property in June, and we've already paid, you know, the premium for the year, we could get abated and get, get, get a portion of it back. Um, so those are, those are some things there for that. That's going to be coming down the pipe. Um, another issue that, that we, we've been working on, um, is I know that sometime that the, um, the, uh, the, the town has been, uh, assessed, um, National Grid bills. And you, you could see on your National Grid bills that there's, there's been a, a, a rolling credit, right? And so, when, when I started, um, we saw that, that, you know, it was brought to Karen and said, yeah, there's these credits on here, I don't know, you know, how we can work this out, or what they're for. So, we, we were looking into that. Um, and, you know, one thing that was, you know, was, was mentioned, it was possibility of solar credits. You know, the solar, for the solar things. So, after, you know, and these credits have been on the bill for, you know, since, you know, some of them have been on there since two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, fifteen. Um, you know, looking at them, and, um, you know, after doing some further extensive research with National Grid, with the, uh, town accountant, uh, in, in pulling some old files and different things, it would appear as though that these are not solar credits. These were done for when the town did a conversion. They did a, a conversion of the, the streetlights, they did a streetlight conversion project. During that project, there was a credit that was issued of about forty thousand dollars that was, that, that, that the board, the selectmen had received back then. That was for the conversion project. But during that same time period, the bill was, was, was still getting paid by the town. The town was continuing to pay a bill which they had a credit for, okay? So, after doing the research and everything, um, I've been working with Pamela Hills, who's very good, Pamela Hill, National Bridge, she's always been very helpful. Um, the town will be, uh, I just got this email today. A refund check will be mailed out earlier this week for eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and eleven cents. So, the town will be getting that money back. That will be miscellaneous income for the town, that we will be getting back into the coffers, into the general fund, it will be recorded on. Now, the solar credits, that's something different. There's still some solar credits out there, so, for some towns, you know, for, for some of the departments in town, uh, to utilize. Now, these solar credits could be used for, you know, energy-efficient projects. You know, I floated the idea, uh, with maybe trying to, you know, seeing if, if the, if the, if the selectmen wanted to maybe, you know, try to do something with the energy efficiency of, of the school, maybe try to allow them to use some credits, you know, on that grant that we had. I still haven't received any information back from the school department on that grant. So, um, you know, we, I floated even that idea out there, of the possibility of going to the select board and saying, hey, listen, we have some energy credits that, that they may allow you to use as part of this, you know, grant, you know, to try to make this grant, grant work. Um, I'm still waiting to hear back from them. But in the interim, the, the overpayment and the overage in these accounts, the, 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 there will be a check back made payable to the town this week, um, according to Pamela Hill from this email that I just received, uh, this afternoon. So, after looking at that, 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 um, you know, the reporting and, and doing some additional digging, that's what we were able to come up with, and so we'll have that as additional miscellaneous income, which will ultimately be part of the free cash calculation for next fiscal year.
And how much was the refund?
Uh, eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and eleven cents.
Very good. Do you have anything else, sir?
No.
Thank you very much. Good job, by the way, tracking that down.
Okay, ask one question?
No.
Come on, one question. So, we, the ID badges that we're playing with then, are these the keys to get in the building?
Those are like the replicas, right?
These are the dummy keys to play with.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah, those are just, there's no, there's no access into them yet.
Yeah, I didn't, I was curious, okay.
No, we're just doing samples.
We do have the actual cards, yes.
So, they're like the same size and everything?
They're exactly the same size, they look just like it.
Chip in there or something?
They have some sort of chip in there, and a little number printed on the back of it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
We've already issued three, just to try it out. But we haven't given them out, but I have.
Okay.
Very excited.
There you go.
No.
Do you have any questions?
Not to the administrator.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Farrar, for your report, and great job getting the money. You know, I'm kind of wondering what's going on with my chiefs over there because I haven't seen a grant this week yet.
We should have one next week, right? Next week, right?
Gee, well, it does look tough, I had two last week.
We don't have one since last year.
Yeah, yeah, nothing since last year. All right, so, we're good with that. So, new business. We have the keyless entry installed. Um, one of the things we're looking at is new cards. Uh, if you want to hand me those. So, we made several versions of what, basically, it's going to become a employee ID and access card to the building. Um, so it's still a purpose, and we're looking at different ways of doing it. We could do it, you know, horizontal or vertical. Um, on the back of the cards, if they are lost, it says, please return to Town of Warren, Board of Selectmen, gives our address to get the card returned. Um, so that's what we were looking at for samples of these cards, um, to do that because right now, we don't have any IDs for, say, assessor. If you go on somebody's property, or you're looking at somebody's property, and they're like, who are you? Well, I'm the assessor. How the hell do I know that? Get off my property. Yeah, you, you could say, well, I'm assessor for the Town of Warren, gives you an ID. Um, makes it a little more official. And then it's also access, so you can get in, in and out of the building too. Well, in the building. Out of the building, once, once you're in here, we don't let you out.
Lunch is served, breakfast lunch, too.
Well, I have water.
I suggest you bring a big bag lunch when you come in. So, the information that we're looking on here is, um, you know, obviously, we put Town of Warren on there, the employee's name, their department, and then their position. Are you guys good with all that information?
I don't know how much power the, uh, software allows you to do, but, you know, thinking, just thinking loud. You know, it's nice when you, if you have a QR code that goes to your email. So, if you're in a meeting or something, and somebody can scan the QR code, and then they get your email.
So, we're trying to get into the twenty-first century. This, this is a big step right now.
Derek, this software we have does not allow that right now.
It does have barcodes on them for, but it doesn't retain information, and we don't have barcode scanners. So, it makes no purpose of putting a barcode on the back of it, because we don't have scanning to do it.
But you can put a QR code, right?
No.
Why not?
It doesn't even, it doesn't give you an option for a QR code.
But you put in the logo.
Yes, because they grab that. You have, literally have to change the.
A separate graphic for every.
For every single person.
And then stick it in there.
What's wrong? It's easy. Nothing wrong with that.
Derek, David and I all gave it to you, those, come on.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Let's, let's get.
Baby's.
Ketchup first. Why ain't there holograms on them? So, one of, one of the designs we were kicking back and forth was doing the vertical and horizontal. Actually, Adam, um, Chief Lavoy brought up that a lot of these, when you do it the, the vertical way, it's a little easier because the badge doesn't get hung up on things. Um, I'm inclined to do that too, and I know some of the ladies in this building are going to love this, but you could actually make the picture bigger too. So, you could, for those of us with bad eyesight now, we could see the picture a little better and see the information on there. I, I like having it this design versus this design. So, what are you guys interested in? I know you're tearing it apart as a graphics kind of guy, but.
I'm trying to hold myself.
Keep, keep in mind, we have to, we're subjects to the limitations of our.
I would say, keep the same font, um, keep the logo without the squared around.
Okay, yeah, we fixed that, yeah.
And probably, you know.
So, it's this one right here.
At least for the Board of Selectmen, not having a position, because then every year, you're going to have to, you know, come up with a new.
Well, that's the other thing too. Um, you know, we could take that off, but we want it on for some of the people because, like, say, fire chief, fire chief. He's not just a firefighter, but he's the chief too, that's his position, so.
But that's true, wards shift every year potentially, so maybe get rid of the position.
We could do that for us, yeah.
For elected.
Yeah, so that was an option. But we could leave it on for other areas.
What about just like those that are elected? Put it on there, well, you guys are elected too though, huh?
Yeah.
So, but like Jeremy, he should have a title, highway surveyor. The two chiefs should have a title.
Yeah. So, certain individuals will have a title bar under there for that, but we can eliminate it for us because, again, the chair moves around, vice chair, clerk, whatever. Um, so we could do that. The other thing that I was looking at, and talked to you a little bit about it, is on the, on the card, there should be an expiration too. And because, right now, the way the card is, it's indefinite. There's no expiration on it. And we should put an expiration on there, but to word the expiration, I, I would say, for elected officials, okay, the end of your term. So, term ends, and you would have that as expiration. So, it's not like you got a card and that's indefinite, so if somebody fails to return their card, the good thing about having them in the system is if you don't return your card, then we just go into the computer and shut your card off so they can't get into the building. That's the whole purpose of this, because one of the problems we've been having is mechanical keys cost money, and they cost a lot of money, especially when somebody loses one, and we don't know where that key is anymore, and we have to have all the keys redone and all the locks redone, because now we don't have a secure building anymore because somebody has a key that we don't know who it is. Um, and that costs a lot of money. So, doing this now, if somebody loses their badge, or, you know, whatever happens, all we do is shut that ID, the badge off, so they can't get into the building no more. And all, all the card, these cards are a dollar about?
Yeah.
With the computer, with the computer chip in it? So, they're like a, a dollar versus spending a thousand dollars to have the building rekeyed and new keys made. So, makes a lot more sense.
Can I answer your question? I like the barcode better in this case. Doesn't, so it doesn't look like a driver license? And it looks important?
Well, you could smile.
Is that the picture?
There's a smile.
There's a smirk.
That's a smile. I said, don't judge the picture.
It's only a test picture.
It's a test picture. I'll try to smile on the next one.
The next one, we'll do a Cali's card.
Yeah, we'll put her picture up there. So, we're looking at something like that, and are you guys good with this format?
Yeah.
This design? And then we could put an expiration date on it based on when your term ends.
Yeah.
And then, when somebody's term ends, if they get re-elected, then they just come and get a new one. And we just take the old one back, give them a new one. And then this also makes sure you have, every three years, you have a good picture of somebody too.
Yeah.
Not like the DMV, where you're stuck with it.
Forty years.
That's your picture. So, so we'll go with this format then, and we'll get rid of the border around the seal.
Oh, good, can I order them then?
So, well, we tried making it bigger, but the problem with it is the Town of Warren and...
It's not very sophisticated.
Another computer guy over here was picking it apart and saying, "Oh, it's not matching up, it's not..." It's like...
Let's try to get all the information and the basics, and then we'll make them look pretty.
Yeah, so, we got the back of the card designed, we got the type of card designed, so we'll use this format now.
Okay, so I can order it?
Where are your badge holders now?
Yay!
Because I was holding her up, and she's like trying to, "Should I order this badge holder?" I'm like, "Hold on, we don't even know what badge we're doing yet."
Yeah.
So, all right, so we'll go with that design, and we'll tweak it, and then we'll start issuing the badges.
Yep.
All right. Okay.
Do we have to create a policy that if you lose it?
Well, hopefully, they mail it back.
Well, it's a dollar, I guess, right? I mean, if somebody loses it.
Well, if somebody does lose it, on the back of the card...
Yeah.
Has our address and stuff to return it. I know with government IDs, there's, you can drop them in the mailbox, just like this, with a government ID. You drop it in the mailbox, and they, they send it to a central processing. So, they recover the government ID like that through the mail. But, if people know where the address is, and they can drop it off, or they can drop it in the mail, and we'll get the badge back.
Look at this, it's one dollar without printing, without the time that Karen's going to spend doing another one.
Well, luckily, it's really easy to do another one, you just click on the badge thing and it prints it.
Once you get it down-packed and you get the picture, you know, putting the information, doing a whole badge, doing a whole process is like five minutes maybe?
At most.
Looking good.
All right, we'll work on your QR codes later on.
I'll give you the QRs.
All right, so that's what I had for new business. Do you have any new business, sir?
I do not.
Sir?
No, sir.
I would just add, one thing that I did forget in the report, for new business, on tab, is it tab? Right before tab thirteen?
Twelve.
Tab twelve or thirteen?
Thirteen.
There's the, for the multi, the UBCO security key, UB key for the multi-point authentication system from Northeast IT. I had, I had asked Karen to get a head count as to how many people we would need to have, have this key. She had indicated, you know, twenty-three would need it. We would recommend, you know, maybe ordering twenty-five, just to have some backups available. And so, they are from Northeast IT, they are available, they're sixty dollars a key, so for twenty-five of them, it would be fifteen hundred dollars. We do have some funds available in the software, hardware account.
Okay. And do they expire, or what's the deal with them, or they just...
They don't expire, they are specific to the user, so they can't be, you know...
And Northeast would have to set them up?
Yeah, they would come, they would set them up, and I had asked them to give us like a tutorial on it. They said it's pretty straightforward, but they would walk us through the process.
And you three, I did not get Bob's for, you have to use your phones.
It's fine, I wasn't...
That's fine, I'm good.
That's what I figured.
You good with that? You use your phone for everything anyways.
I like using the phone, it's easier. Nothing to lose, except the phone.
My phone number's out there everywhere anyway, so... Northeast has it, I don't care. All right. So you want a motion for that?
Well, I mean, this is just, I mean, I know we talked about it before, it's just really a more administrative thing, you know, we're going to have to do it. We have funds available to do it. If you want to authorize me to go with Northeast IT, I can do that.
Where are the funds coming from?
So, it would be from our line item within our budget for hardware, software.
Okay. You good?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of sixty UBCO security keys.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Oh, there's sixty of each. Twenty-five, twenty-five security keys.
Okay. All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion is approved, you can purchase the twenty-five keys.
Thank you, sir.
For up to fifteen hundred dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other new business? Mr. Farrar?
No, sir.
Okay, old business. Do you have anything old?
No.
I have a list of things, but I don't know if they go into old or comments. Maybe I'll leave them for comments, just in case.
Are they things we've already talked about?
Yeah, we kind of like talked about it.
That's old business. What are they?
Let's leave them for comments and concerns.
You have concerns?
Comments.
All right. So, no old business. Correspondence, did we get any? No? No?
Well, it's actually one of my lists. I got one of those emails trying to trap me from IT.
Oh, I got one of those too.
And I saw it on the phone, and, well, I do this all the time, so I saw, "Oh, this is one of those," and I click it on purpose, but it doesn't work on the phone. It only works on the computer. But it was a good try.
I thought about doing that too, but I was like, eh...
Northeast trying to trap you?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you click on it, then you get spanked.
Yeah.
And you have to go in and take tests.
Yeah. Four hours away from your test or something.
Four hours.
It's pretty cool, because when you click on it, it tells you, "Oh, thank God, this is just a test," or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And they teach you...
You just compromise your town.
Over on top of the link, try to read the link and everything, then it comes, it works.
Right.
It's cool. Find you like that one.
Okay, so no other correspondence other than your cyber challenge?
Cyber attack.
Okay, comments and concerns? Do you have any comments and concerns?
So, I do have a comment, just regarding the storm. I'd like to thank police, fire, highway...
Cert team?
Cert team, we have a shelter open, everybody was working hard, and thank the linemen from National Grid. I guess there were people up here from like Arizona, and like all over the place. I mean, that's a crappy job to be up there in a bucket trying to rehang wires or whatever they're doing when that stuff happens, so... It was a really good effort, and the people were without power for a little while, but they, everybody worked hard to get them back up and running, so it was a good effort.
Worked out well?
Yeah. And I think the fact that we could muster and get the shelter open is a good sign also.
Yeah, we were able to stand it up very quickly.
Yeah, that's important, because, I mean, not a lot of people took advantage of, but that doesn't mean next time.
Well, some of our residents did take advantage of it, they stayed till that, later that night. And then, West Brookfield had some, because they didn't stand up a shelter. They sent some of their people over, some of their residents.
Yeah.
And we took them in, and were able to help them out too. And then they had some of their people come over to help us out too. But, Chief Lavoy? Did he finally get you to sleep? Because he was awake for a long time.
It's all good.
I don't know how many times I told you to go home and get some sleep. But I understand, you guys did great, and thank you, Chief Mallett, for getting the police officers there to help out in the center too. It's important to have that security element there, you know, whenever you stand up a shelter, so they helped out a lot. Thank you. It was a good job.
I think it's a really good plug for Cert too.
Cert did awesome.
They're down to very minimum members, and they only had a couple of members that were willing, that were able to come out, and, you know, if people are truly looking to step up honestly to help the town, that's one capacity they can do that in. Because something like that is a lot to deal with, and without enough people, it can be very, very tough. So that was one thing, is, you know, people really want to help out, and they, you know, can't, for whatever reason, can't join fire, or, you know, obviously, police or something like that. If they're looking to help, join the Cert team, you know, because they can do some good there.
Cert did a great job.
Like everything else, so...
Cert did a great job, they had somebody staffing that shelter the whole time. They set up, they provided blankets, inflatable pillows for people. I have to say, Principal Duff, amazing man, because he helped stand up the, with the lunch staff there, you know, the school staff, they were able to provide some meals, make coffee.
They put together great meals quickly and everything, had everything ready to go, so kudos to the staff up there.
Yeah, we agree.
Principal Duff, they did a great job.
Jim McKeon wants to come in and do a report next week.
Yeah, that's another thing I was going to say, is we could, we should probably have after-action report with Jim McKeon. Set up an after-action report.
Yeah.
Invite West Brookfield in here, because we do need to work with West Brookfield a little bit more, because if we're going to have a situation like this again, and we're going to take their residents, we are going to need support from them a little more. You know, they, because they didn't stand up a shelter, and they did have residents in need, we did get some of their people over here, and we helped them out, of course, because they're our neighbors. But it'd be nice to have manpower too, because again, Cert, Alan from Cert, he was there when I left the night of the incident, and when I came back the next day, he was there again. And he was still working. He didn't work through the night, he got a relief over the night, but...
He was back in the morning.
He was back again in the morning. So he did a lot, and I commend him for doing that, volunteering. But that was also because Cert doesn't have enough team members, and couldn't happen at a worse time, because of course, it was happening over the Christmas weekend, you know, everybody's on vacation or going away, so everybody was away, so it was very difficult. But we got it done, everybody pulled it together, and the town pulled it together, and we made it happen. But, yes, if you can set up an after-action session, and we'll discuss that, and we'll have the chiefs there, and...
We did a great job, they're up for those afterwards too, so, I mean, hats off to them too, they were out there in force.
If we could have Principal Duff there in the school too, because they helped out a lot too, by standing that up and using their own, what was it, their, not YouTube account, but, I don't know, they set up the TV, so they were able to put TV up there for residents to watch.
And stuff with their parents, and, you know, so it's a lot of, you know, all the departments, they did, you know, whether it was barricading roads, whether it was closing roads, you know, everybody worked pretty well together. I do agree, the communication between the two towns is probably where we need to work on the most, just so everyone's on the same page, especially being a school district and using that school as a, you know, a community shelter for both communities.
We'll go into detail with that in the after-action. Okay? So, comments and concerns, do you guys have any?
Yeah, I do. So, I just want to reply to Glenn, he made a valid question through here, I know we don't take that aspect, but it's, I think it's okay. I'm going to respond, he wrote, "If someone finds an active badge, what keeps them from entering the building?" And we addressed that, you know, we can unplug him right away from the system, so if I lose my badge, the first thing I have to do is tell Jim or Karen that I lost it, so they can cut that. And then, he also asked how much it costs, I think we talked about the price, but I'll call it about five bucks a piece or something like that.
No, they're pretty cheap.
Put the ink and all that, and...
Yeah, time, time and everything.
Then, my second comment is, IT moved the server, right?
Yes.
So, just for the Wi-Fi, the speed increased about between six and seven in this room. The Wi-Fi speed increased a little bit.
Six and seven percent?
No, bits per second.
Oh, okay.
So we had like twenty-five, now we are around thirty.
Okay.
So it's a good thing.
Just removing that wall of...
Cut, it's closer.
We cut out some length of...
Yeah, it's cutting all the floor and the structure.
Interesting.
Probably new wiring too, because they ran all new wiring too, right? No?
Some additional wiring for upstairs.
Yeah, a little bit, not a lot.
Well, I just noticed that today.
That's awesome.
Yeah?
Five million.
Faster speed now.
Faster. Just wanted to touch base with Alan, offer some help, did you get in some help on the street house signs?
Still working on that, you know, we, they did take a vote for the ARPA money for that, to start getting those ordered, so, I mean, everything was kind of closed down since our last meeting for the new, you know, the holidays and stuff, so I'll be reporting back on that soon. I'm still looking for options for posts and stuff from other different things, but I'm working on that, so I will report that back to the board soon. You know, that's something where, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time to roll out, I want to make sure we do it correctly and figure out exactly what service we're going to offer, whether it's we come out and install it in a place that, you know, because I just want to make sure if we're going to give them to people, they don't just go and put it on the house that's still two hundred feet back from the road, you know what I mean? So we're just trying to do the legwork on that to make sure it gets done correctly. So we're not, we're giving them some guidance, or we're physically going out there to help them with where it should go. So, I will get that back to the board in the next couple of weeks, I'm sure.
Thank you. We talked about a little bit, so it's time to have a credit card for the, for everybody, I'm talking about the, you know, like...
For each department?
Yeah.
That needs to get done. Do we have a status on that?
So we would have to work with the treasurer on that, and we can, we'll work on that. We will also develop a policy around that as well. The treasurer does have some reservations on it, she has some valid stuff, some valid concerns. Maybe a meeting with her might be helpful, or having her come to a meeting, you know, maybe be helpful. So, we'll see, you know, how we can progress on that. It's going to take some time.
I understand her concerns and stuff, but we've been talking about this for a long time, and I have more concerns with the fact that we have employees using their personal credit card accounts to purchase town items and then try and get reimbursed. I think that's more of a conflict, because if we decide and we vote it down and say, "We're not reimbursing it," now that employee is stuck with that debt on their credit card. And it's not fair to the employee, and I feel it's, and it's definitely an ethics issue, because we should not be asking employees to use their personal finances to purchase town property. I understand that's what we've been doing, but it's not right, so we have to fix this. It has to be dealt with. Now, also, the gas card for the ACO, that needs to be resolved too. There's no reason that we're going into seven, eight months, and she still doesn't have a gas card.
I've checked with her on that a couple of times now. There's a whole new application that she has to fill out for this particular gas card. She couldn't use the same gas card that was in the car, there's a whole new process. She has been completely busy because of, you know, the close of the out of the year and this special town meeting that we just had. She's only down to one staff person, it's only her, there's no assistant there. So, you know, she is, she's well aware of that, because I made it very clear that that's something that we need, you know, as soon as possible. So, I have a confidence that that will be done relatively soon.
She in the process of hiring somebody?
She's, there's a little bit trickier situation over there. She's, you know, she's looking to, you know, to find some really good qualifications, it's a, it's a very short span of an opportunity. It's part-time work, so it's a little difficult to find somebody, you know, that she wants to, you know, fill that position, you know, that will work for her. So she's, she's got, she's got some feelers out, I think she put some additional feelers... got some feelers out, I think she, you know, put some additional feelers out after she saw some of the success that we had with the Board of Health, I think she re-advertized it a little bit more to try to get her feelers out, um, so.
Thanks. And I, I know, Jim, you're very busy, but I just bringing this that we spoke, and I don't wanna, you know, leave it in, in the past, we spoke about mail stamp machine or something like that?
Yes, yeah.
We've been talking about the petty cash and everything, but a lot of the expenses is mailing, so.
Um, that's something that we could definitely do, um, you know, that is gonna be some expensive proposition to, to get, you know, the, the actual machine, you have to purchase one of those machines, I can get some quotes and some pricing for you on that, something we could do.
It may work, it may not work, but just looking at all the possibilities, yeah. We also talk about using something else in Zoom, so we save on, on that too.
Something free?
Yeah, you wanna guys use something, try and test something else, and I can propose something for next week, and we announce it in the next week, or?
So, if that, if, if you wanna do that, which is totally fine, we would just, you just have to give up the updated information to Karen, so that she could put the passwords and, and everything on the agenda, so that, that the public would have access to, to joining, so if you change that, I know that, that the password and the link has always been the same, right Karen? Yeah, so we just have to give her new information, so that.
There's some services that just click, you don't have to even put a password.
Okay.
It's easier for the public.
Are you gonna look into that one?
I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look into it, and then on the next meeting, we'll announce it for the next meeting to switch to that, so people know, and just as a test, you know. I know it's little money, but, you know.
Save the money, yeah.
Or remember we talked about going in something about a gas station for the town, for the town.
Fuel depot.
Yeah.
That's the highway, and we're looking at that, um, Jeremy Olson, um, we need to get more serious talks about that, if we're gonna do that, and that would have to be a bid, that'd have to go out to bid, probably be put in front of the town to vote on, um, because that's gonna be a big project, because you're gonna have to design, um, I don't, have you ever done a fuel depot?
Fuel, but not, not gas.
How, how involved?
A lot, yeah.
So, you know, I, I spoke to Ware, um, when they redid their fire station, they put a, a fuel depot over there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, they, they, they factored that into their new fire station over there, um, and they built it, you know, based around that, and, you know, they said on average, you know, depending on what you wanna do, if you're gonna have diesel and straight gas, um, you know, you could, um, you know, be looking anywhere between five to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's a big expense.
You know, for, for something like that, you know, you know, we, we may wanna look at down the road to try to maybe, you know, if we get, if we buy directly from, you know, a local, you know, I look at how all the fuel is done in town here, but if we buy, we maybe work out an arrangement with a local, that may be the best, uh, you know, case scenario, some type of local arrangement, you know, for, for purchasing a fuel, that's somebody that's open twenty-four seven, like at a hall town or.
So, we basically sort of sign a contract or a deal, where they give us a discount and bring all our business.
Right.
Have you tried pre-buy, I'm sure you can buy, pre-buy fuel. Yeah, we store it right at the station, they'll, they'll figure that in, they'll factor that in, I, I think.
Oh, really?
I think Sherman would do something like that.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that for a home heating oil, you don't get it delivered, you, but you buy a contract, right? And then you get a good price.
Sherman Oil, not, old sicko now, I mean, went downtown.
Well, they always, they always have. Yeah, maybe we can look at that.
You're not twenty-four hours, though, that's a.
Buy or buy and.
Well, maybe buy some in bulk from them, and then come up with a deal with.
You, it's not bad to have kind of multiple arrangements.
Yeah.
You know, in case something goes down.
Absolutely.
And I would, I would also recommend, even if you were to put a, a system in, to have a, a backup, you know, having a station that, that's, you know, twenty-four seven in case your system went down.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
Well, yeah, the fire, the fire chief in, in, in Westbrook Field announced today that they have Town Alert now in Westbrook Field, so if you wanna find out for those two, so they, they went officially online today.
I see they have your scan there.
Your QR code?
QR code.
That is, how did you do that, Karen?
Anything else, sir?
That's it, and if I forgot something, I'll bring it up next week.
All right, Mr. Farrar, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Comments, concerns?
No.
Does it public?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I have a lot.
Oh, God. Can you just identify who you are?
Jim Fountain.
Yep.
First of all, I think, uh, Mr. Farrar going out and doing something with the delinquent tax, our properties and stuff like that, that the town is taking back, is a first step that I've been after for ten, twelve years, and our, our town, for some reason, has never, there's several properties that, in, in addition to what you've spoken to, that we own, or the town owns, I should say, that there should have been auctioned off a long time ago, and they're not in tax title, I mean, they're not in the tax roll, so we're not getting anything out of them right now, so I'm, I'm glad to see he's finally, you know, someone's finally doing something, and, and I was actually gonna say, you word about the town comment and, and stuff making it look good, but underneath, underneath the railroad bridge, and then you got an eyesore right there, and I know that one of the neighbors wants to buy that place in the worst way, we're, but in, in the past, we waited so long, they get dilapidated, then the town has to pay to clean them up, and then the property sits there, and the town owns it. So, that was one concern, but the reason why I actually came tonight was, you, you're always, I, I don't come to your meetings, but I listen to you all, and I watch all the meetings that I do, and I listen to what you say, and one of the things you talk about is transparency in the town. Well, Mr. Farrar has done a great job, we've been trying to produce our product, get another bank to come into town, so we've been working hard to do that, we haven't had a bank that was ready to do something, um, Mr. Farrar called, one of the requests from the bank was that we, that they get the town business, or some of the town business, if possible, and the school business, so Mr. Farrar set up a meeting, I wasn't at that meeting or anything, but from what I understand, the town was great, they said, hey, we're very much, you know, I want the voters to know this too, that's what I'm really here for, but the town was great to say, yes, we'll give you as much business as we possibly can, when they asked the school, the school said, no, flat out. So, you know, that's our money in this town, and we, we produce probably almost, what, three quarters of it going to the school, so all the townspeople stand up every time these guys want money, and we say, yes, 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 but when it comes time for the, the town asks for some little super thing, they didn't have to give it all, they could have given a small portion, but just to pacify, you know, but anyhow, they said, no, so I just want the townspeople to realize that, you know, number one is, we give them a check, a blank check, pretty much, and nobody knows what they do up there, I was, I was really hoping that you guys would continue going after the audit idea, and someone being in charge to see where, where that money goes, because we spend a lot of money up there for nothing, as far as, I'm not for nothing, there's a lot of good people up there, I'm not saying that, but the ones that make the decisions are the ones that don't care about this town, so that, that irks me, and like I say, Mr. Farrar has done a great job to try and persuade the bank to come here, I don't think that was the determining factor that the school didn't come here, but, uh, there may have been other idea, other problems, other, but not major problems, but the fact that they were turned off at, at the beginning, that they kinda, they went away, they're not coming back, so, and I tried diligently to get them back here, because Warren needs a bank, I mean, we need to be more self-sufficient than we are, so it's just, you know, that bothered me, so I just want the townspeople to know, the selectmen, if you didn't know, that Mr. Farrar did try his darndest to get them in here, and they didn't come, and it was because of the school, or not, not totally because of them, but a good deal because of them.
Well, I, I think it was because of them.
Yeah.
I think it's town.
But that's. You, you could say, you can call it what it is.
Yeah.
He did his best, and you guys tried working a deal, and everything was coming together.
There was a whole bunch of businesses in town.
That's what they were waiting for, they were waiting for the school to get on board, 'cause everything else had been lined up, and that, and that didn't happen, so.
There was, there was a lot of businesses in town that also I spoke to, and they said, if they, if somebody opens in town, they would go to them, so it was, you know.
It was the financial commitment, right? They couldn't get a big enough financial commitment.
Right.
To make it worth them to come into town, and that's just gonna repeatedly happen.
Yes.
Until we can get everybody on board to do that.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we can't control the school, we try to help, and we try to guide, and try to suggest, and try to work things out, but the school board is their own thing, and it's shared between the two towns, and sometimes they're not always looking at the best interest of the Warren residents.
It's not sometimes, it's all the time, they just want their money, they don't care.
So, nobody ever said that the audit went away.
I hope not.
So, we are looking into the finances, and we just recently had a meeting with them, um, in the school finance committee.
The budget committee.
Budget committee, and we talked with them, and let them know, they really need to put their finances in check.
Yep.
Because I could tell you right now, they're gonna come at this town with a very large sum for above minimum contribution, and we can't afford it.
They need to walk away with a zero this one time, just to show them they in business, so.
Again, we tried doing that last year.
Yeah.
We tried, our tactic was to have the school come to the town and present to the town their budget and debate their budget, nobody from the school got out and presented their budget. No, nobody wanted to debate it, nobody wanted to even bring it up, it was a resident from the town who brought it up and said, let's take the previous two years of above minimum contribution, kinda divide it, and factor out, and come up with a number, and that's what we, we vote on. Everybody went for it. People that understand, whether we disagree or not, we don't approve the budget, we don't approve that, that amount, the residents do, the residents vote on it, and if you don't show up for a town meeting, so when things go up, like your property taxes go up, um, there's multiple factors in there, and when everything just gets approved in a town meeting, that's gonna happen, somebody gotta pay for it, and the school budget is way out of hand.
It is.
We, we agree, we, we've been fighting this since we've all been on, and I can tell you right now, it's, it's been a little contentious sometimes, uh, to say, um, but they, we've been already putting them in checks, saying, hey, do not come to us expecting a couple million dollars over above minimum contribution, 'cause the town cannot afford it, the taxpayers are gonna have to pay for that, and we cannot do it. And it's gonna happen, because they're not getting ESER funds this year, right?
Right.
ESER funds is cut out, so they're not getting that funding, which they were using to augment their budget, which, for whatever reason, that's what they decided to do, those funds are gone.
Yeah.
So, they're not getting those this year, they still have all the same programs, all the same stuff, obligations that they need to do, plus they're in the middle of negotiations for contracts, so there might be an increase there, plus fuel expenses are increasing, that's everybody, I'm sure you've seen fuel expenses going way up, so that's hitting everybody, and, you know, between that and the properties being assessed high, um, we got into this situation now, and it's gonna get worse next year, if we don't get it in check and work together with the school to fix it.
Well, that's my next comment, is our taxes went to happen this past year, you know, and, and I know some of the boards are gonna get very offended with me, and at this point, I want everybody to realize that coming up from my side of the, of the coin, not just their side, it's everybody else's side, I think the world of all the departments, I'm not saying that, but you guys went above and beyond to make sure, and, and your statement was, to retain the people that are here, you gave them large raises, you gave them all kinds of good things, that's not, not a problem, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, but you gotta also remember, we can retain all the employees we want, but you gotta retain the taxpayers also, and I, you know, my, my, my house alone went up in assessment eighty-eight thousand dollars, my taxes along with all my, um, most of my properties is up over five thousand, just, this, just, you know, this year, I can afford it, I'll keep working, I, I can afford it, but what about the other taxpayers that were just barely making it before, you know, that, that's gonna take a direct hit to all of those people, not to mention the people that, um, you know, your gas prices went up, your fuel prices went up, everything went up, we are going, and the other thing that kinda cut my throat pretty much, is the new housing, me building new houses in Warren, I don't, I hope people realize that that's an asset to the town, I mean, the little house that I built on Maple Street, I just seen the tax bill on that house, that's a sixteen hundred square foot house, something like that, they, that little, that little house is gonna be paying almost seven thousand dollars a year in taxes, in Warren, that's crazy.
Yeah.
You know what that just did to my, selling houses, when you go to the bank and the bank says, hey, the interest rates are higher, you only have so much money, they look at everything, they look at the insurance, they look at the taxes, when they get all done, you can't afford it, 'cause your taxes are seven thousand dollars a year on a new house, so you took, you raised my taxes, you took some of my income away, so yeah, I'm, I'm really ripping right now at this point, because, and I'm not alone, like I say, I'll keep working, I'll make, I, I can make it, I'm, I'm not gonna say I can't, but there's a lot of people out there that probably won't make it, so then all those houses go back on the market, and flood the market again, and stuff like that, so, but I guess what I'm looking at is, and again, I don't know who's gonna take offense to this, but you gave them all raises, and then you added people, and I'm gonna use the highway department as a, as a, as a, a thing here, I've been in town all my life, and I've always known the highway department, and we haven't added an inch of road anywhere, I don't think we're building any new roads anywhere, but we always handled it with three or four guys, now you got seven, what can seven guys do all day long, when it's not snowing, raining, or whatever? I mean, I go by the barn a hundred times a day, I don't know where everybody is, but there's seven guys someplace being paid, so I look at, is it a waste of money, my money? No, because you're really dug into my pockets this time, so, I, yeah, and if anybody gets offended by what I'm, I'm gonna say, it's too bad, I mean, I'm just looking at a waste of money, two more highway, I mean, two more highway, two more people were hired at the sewer plant, two guys ride around in one pickup all day long, they go from Dunkin' Donuts, Dippin' Donuts, they go up here and they take a couple of measurements off of the sewer plant, they go to West Warren, take a couple of measurements, and they do the procedure all over again, that's a waste of my money, and I don't care what anybody says, it's a waste of my money, and I know you're gonna get mad at me, you're gonna get mad at me probably, the pickup we're buying for the fire department, what a waste of money, why are we buying the pickup for the fire department?
That's actually ARPA money, it's not tax money.
It doesn't matter, it's not ARPA money, who's gonna pay for the gas, who's gonna pay, the next thing I'm gonna be saying is, you know, we got a truck that's sitting outside rusting, we need to add on the fire station, we need to do all these things, and what I'm getting at is, we just shot ourselves in the foot, you are not gonna go to the taxpayers now and say that, hey, hey, listen, we wanna build a municipal building to get the police department out of a condemned building, and we're gonna, we're gonna do all this stuff, you're gonna go to me and say, hey, we're gonna raise your taxes another, whatever, because we need a building, no way, I'm gonna go against that a hundred percent, and I was in favor of a new building, I really was, but right now, it's just, what in the heck are we thinking, I mean, we're doing crazy things, we're, we're, and, and I'm not grudging, I mean, I want the town to look good, but you're gonna, wait till we get the lawsuits that are gonna come down the road, you don't think the police department being forced to stay in a condemned building, a condemned building, isn't gonna someday someone's gonna say, hey, you know, I don't feel very good, I think it's because I was forced to work in that building, they shouldn't be in that building, if it was condemned, they shouldn't be in that building, they shouldn't.
So, I think we're all in agreement with you.
I know, but.
We're not debating.
But we're spending money everywhere else on everything else, and we should be looking at a place for them, or something that's a necessity.
So, with the highway department, they took on more responsibilities, they took over parks, they took over cemetery, they took over that stuff.
Jim couldn't take care of all that, him and the part-time guy, they still have the part-time guy, so, so.
No.
Didn't, didn't.
Jim McKeon became a town employee, and you can't double dip like that.
I understand, but I'm saying, you, he, by adding the cemetery and the parks, you did not add three more people.
So, we're eliminating equipment, because they're able to take care of those areas now, um, their budgets have also been cut and reduced, because now that's towards highway, because highway's servicing those areas, um, which they got better service now, if you talk to parks, they're absolutely happy, because now things are being done within the parks, they have equipment available to them, that they don't have to come out and ask for the town for money for, so when they have to have, um, say, an excavator come out and lay, saw, well, was it, topsoil or anything, and reseed an area or anything like that, they don't have to hire somebody out to do that, because parks does it, well, highway. They don't have to hire somebody out to do that because parks does it, well, highway does it now. So all that stuff is being taken care of now in-house. Yes, there was an expense and we had to add people onto that to be able to absorb all that. But in the big picture, those extra costs are absorbed from those other departments too. And we're getting a better service. So it, it made more sense to do that, that way. Um, so that, that was the one thing.
Oh, sewer.
The sewer department. Now with sewer department, we're mandated to have so many people working there, okay? We were understaffed and we were being fined by, um.
EPA.
EPA and.
DEP.
DEP.
So even if they ride around, that qualifies you as not being fined anymore?
All, yeah, all we need to do is have a person in that position.
It's ridiculous.
So we have one person down there, um, last year over the summer. Um, he wasn't qualified to work with chlorine. Um, you can't have one person in the plant, cause it's, if something happens to them, there's nobody there to, to notice frankly. So we were looking at fines of like fifty thousand dollars a day or something.
Seventy-seven thousand dollars.
From, um.
From EPA. They hit us with a fine for seventy-seven thousand dollars. And we were able to talk it down to seven thousand dollars. We had to suck up a seven thousand dollar, um, violation, um, from the EPA because of staffing issues. Cause we didn't have enough people there. They were looking at, the seventy-seven thousand dollars was the first one. And then they were gonna hit us with another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand and then progressively larger after that until we fixed the problem. So we were able to negotiate with them and talk with them and get, get us down to a seven thousand dollar fine, which had to be paid because again, they'll shut you down and keep on fining you. So that's why we have those staff members there to meet what is required by DEP and EPA and.
You know, I, I looked at all the stuff that was voted, because I was handed the sheet and they said, remind, remember, this was why, why the taxes went up because of all the stuff we spent. Our taxes went up to replenish the free cash, that's what it was. Cause ninety percent of what you guys spent last year, or everybody spent last year, was free cash. They took it out of free cash, free cash. As far as I'm concerned, that free cash shouldn't be free, free cash. That means that we're getting charged too much as taxpayers. So what I'm going to do, and I, I don't know the logistics of it, but I'm gonna find out. But I think there should be a citizens petition that anything over a million dollars, it's enough coffers, anything over and above goes towards a tax rate. Because you know, it's very hard to produce.
So we, we tried doing that and we actually tried getting, doing a vote on returning money to the taxpayers.
It's gotta be done that way.
And it was.
Two years ago.
It was illegal or what was it?
No, no, um, um.
What was the?
We did vote once.
Yeah.
But it got voted down by the town people because it was stated that if you give them money back this year, that's gonna make it feel like it doubles next year.
Yeah, but it isn't. If you look at, if you look at the input of the town, last year was nine hundred thousand excess. This past year was like one point two million. So we're, we're building, but we're building, I mean, you have three million dollars between, am I right? Am I wrong? Between stabilization and free cash is around three million.
So, so the last two years fiscally, uh, last two fiscal years, you were at, uh, this year was at like, uh, one point two, like the year before was at nine hundred and something. But historically, the town has really only seen anywhere between two to five hundred thousand dollars. So that's something that we definitely have to look at in terms of budgeting purposes to see why is there such an excess of, of, of funds?
The rates are too high.
Well, no, no, you know, I, I think a lot of it had to deal with, you know, a lot of municipalities across the Commonwealth had experienced that same influx of free cash is because they also had an influx of ARPA money. And the ARPA money was used to plug capital expenditures. Like I, I, I informed, I, I, you know, I, I suggested to the board and the board went along with, you know, using the, um, the ARPA funds for expenditures of one-time expenditures, not reoccurring expenditures. To invest in long-term, um, assets, you know, things that would, you know, create value, have, have a afterlife of at least a minimum of, you know, five years after, after the fact. So, you know, I think, I think that's one of the contributing factors. Um, you know, the, one of the things that I, you know, some of the surpluses that I saw, that I just observed since my time being here is that there was a surplus in, in some of the healthcare line items and some of the other budgetary line items. Uh, you know, we're gonna have to look at that. How are we budgeting for, you know, for, for, for benefits? Uh, you know, are we budgeting every employee? Are we only budgeting people that would be eligible? You know, we gotta look at that. Um, those are things that we're gonna look at, um, this budget cycle. Um, it's, it's always nice to have some, some free cash and historically, the town has always spent all of the free cash. This year, this board has decided to reserve free cash for, for an emergency, which is important.
I think a lot of people look at that free cash as it's free cash. It's not though.
It's, right, right.
My mentality of, if it's there, we can use it. It's not there because.
It's not, no. You, you gotta get authorization from the townspeople to use it.
It understandable, but a lot of people, you know, I, I think from now on out, I'm gonna be one there. I'm gonna say, if you wanna spend money on a paper clip, what's that gonna do to everybody's taxes here? Because people, you, you say.
We actually did that this, this last.
But if, if you say it to somebody, it's gonna, your taxes are, I, I was at a meeting one time, there was a lady that was there, she said, oh, hang on. She, it was, it was to do with the school. And they said, it's only gonna, you're gonna, your tax is gonna go up about a dollar. She's thinking in her mind, a buck, that's it. No, no, it's a dollar per thousand, so her house is worth a couple hundred thousand, a couple hundred bucks. And you guys probably know what I'm talking about, but within six months after she found out that she was wrong, she moved. She went to Connecticut, she got the heck out of here. Well, it, that's the true story. That, that is a true story. But anyhow, trying to say that people don't understand how much everything cost them and then, you know, it just.
That was actually asked to Mr. Farrar during the annual meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
And we didn't lay it out, he did present it and say, yes, it's gonna go up, it's gonna go up this much. And presented to everybody, if everything passes, this was, this is what you're gonna see, it doesn't increase.
Approximately eight hundred dollars.
I think a lot of people that go, I, I think a lot of people that go, they, they are renters. So they, they, they figured they got no skin in the game. Guess what? This year, everybody's gonna raise their rent because gotta pay for this stuff.
Well, renters feel the pressure.
We tell people all the time, you have to come to meetings, you have to come to town meetings. Our town meetings are pathetic.
Yes, I know.
Pathetic. And we keep on pushing it, saying, you need to come to town meetings, if you're upset, come to a town meeting. Talk, present it, vote, okay? People just don't show up. It's sad when we have a town of almost six thousand people and only a hundred, hundred twenty people show up for a town meeting. They decide what's happening in this town. They vote on what the policies are, they vote on where the money's going, they vote on the budgets, okay? Those people. We tried to give them the facts, we gave them the facts, told them what was gonna happen, and it happened.
We tried a Saturday meeting to.
We tried, we tried doing a Saturday meeting to try to attract people, to make it more easy. We offered childcare for meetings to, to get families in there and say, hey, there's gonna be childcare there for you to, to help. Just short of us going in and dragging people out of their houses to town meetings.
I know.
You know, all I can say is, show up at the town meeting and bring everybody you can, gather up everybody you can. Fill your car, show up at the meeting, okay?
That's why the school, guess they're willing to bring all their.
That's exactly it, yep.
You know, and it, it, votes are gonna go a certain way if you got a certain population that have, say, something that's concerning the school. People that want to support that are gonna show up. And they're gonna show up in numbers and they're gonna outnumber the ones that, that sit there and say, hey, I don't want my taxes going up. Well, this is for a good cause, we're voting for it.
You know, the other thing is, the town has mentioned many times that we're business friendly. When these increases happen, they go, you know, I, I'm a small P on. My taxes, like I said, went up five, six thousand, seven thousand dollars, whatever this year. What about someone like Warren Pumps? I don't know how they are financially, but they, they get hit hard. I don't know what their increase was, if they got the same eighty percent as I did, well.
When we set the tax rates, we vote for a level tax rate.
Right.
Across the board. We don't increase it for businesses because they're businesses. Because we don't wanna force out businesses. A lot of towns do do that because they have abundance of business. They have that stuff, they have those assets. We don't have that and we want the business to come here, we wanna do this.
But I'm saying, even the residential rate is high. When you get somebody that's valued at, you know, a hundred thousand versus two million, you know what? And then if you reassess them besides, you know, something you may, Warren Pumps.
We, we have no, no control over the assessed rates of what homes are.
I, I don't think whoever assessed this time was from this area.
They used a consultant.
Something's not right. I mean, you, there's no way. I, I'll tell you what, my house is thirty-something years old. I haven't done anything, mowed the grass the last several, cause I've been too busy. And for my value to go eighty-eight thousand dollars, that's something that's not right there.
All our taxes went up too.
Yeah.
We all pay taxes here, you know, we agree with you.
Yeah.
We were like, are you kidding? Were we seeing it?
Building lots in Warren, I have been buying them for, I can still buy them today for twenty, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand. My building watch, watch went up to sixty. Where'd that come from? You know, and I looked, all the past sales and the ones that are up for sale. You might find something around sixty, but it's like ten acres. You're not finding anything that's a building lot.
So there's also been a pattern in town of any increases were either leveled out. This is historically, or maybe it would be a very small increase. So if you look at the sewer rates, instead of trying to increase it to actually pay for the plant, either there would be no increase year over year or like a tiny one percent. So what's happening now is, they have to play catch-up. So now sewer rates go up fifteen percent a year because they're so far behind the eight ball. So I don't know, maybe that's what happened with the assessed values? I'm not sure if they were just kind of tweaked up every year and now we're playing this catch-up, you know?
There's just a lot. And like I said, then when you're still, I guess what bothers me is the fact that you're sitting on three million dollars and, and you raise our taxes so much at one time. It was like that, you know, that was a slap in the face. And again, I know everything, this has been a long time, but as a, as a taxpayer, I can only use the town hall but four days a week, cause everybody's gone, that's supposed to be saving money. I don't see that as saving money. And on top of that, if it's a holiday, it's down to three days a week. And now the, the, what do you call it? The highway department, they're down to four days a week. Why? Why, why does everybody have to have four days a week? I mean, I have to still, you know, I have to still work five, six days a week. Why isn't everybody else?
Something we've already started addressing that. How many days a week you work?
Five.
Yeah.
Five.
Okay.
But if I wanna come in and pay my taxes and I'm, I'm late because they're open Fridays.
So, yeah, we're, we're working on that and we're getting kickback. Um, because again, people are accustomed to a, a certain thing. And we, you know, police department's five days a week, fire's five days a week, everybody's five days a week.
Five, maybe seven, seven days a week.
Well, he, he talked to Adam, he's like, seven days.
Five days a week, what's that?
Twenty-three hours a day.
Anyhow, I was just furious. I just, and I, you don't, you don't see me coming here raising anything. I, I mean, I try and stay a low key, but I, I feel very bad for the residents who are on fixed incomes. Some of those people are barely making it a week now, so I don't know how they're gonna make it now. When I used to have the oil business, I, you, you could see older people especially. Their social security checks don't go up at these big jumps like these are. But you could see people, they were either had to eat or pay for heat. Uh, you know, it was one or the other, they couldn't afford both. And then you add all this other stuff into it, you know? Grocery prices and everything else. I, I just, you know, I feel for those people, I do.
Unfortunately, it's a, it's a perfect storm of everything. Because, you know, with inflation of everything, um, gas prices going up, everything costing more money, fuel expenses. It's ridiculous to buy oil now. It's, to fill up your oil tank, it's.
Thousand bucks.
Easily.
Eight hundred.
And, and, and that's crazy. And we have harsh winters and we use that oil. And, you know, I buy oil too. I, I see it, it's crazy. But everything is going up. And unfortunately, when everything, all these fuel expenses are going up, okay? So now we gotta heat the building. So our fuel expenses are going up for the building. So that fuel expense, we're not getting an abatement for that. We have to get that money somewhere to pay for that now. So our budget has to go up for that stuff.
Same thing as I was saying, you, you should look into pre-buy Zefalon on heating this building. Or whatever building you're doing it on.
And that's why we're exploring all these options. It's like, how can we pre-buy surplus? How can we buy surplus and store it somewhere for police and fire? Because right now, they're subject to what the gas prices are. You know, they have to go and fuel up at the gas stations. So we're trying to look at ways we can source this. We're also trying to get other business in town. We're trying to help with the, the mill complex to get that going. We got a master plan coming up to, to help develop that project for them, to help them bring commercial business. Because that's where we'll be able to get our money from. We can't get it from the residents. So we, we're trying to get this commercial. Every town has commercial business. You look at Charlton, Palmer. You know, all these towns, they have big commercial businesses.
But our tax rate is high.
We have a few.
It's fifteen eighty. Westbrook Field's eleven.
They're also in a bad situation.
I know, I know.
We're in a real bad situation. So comparing us to Westbrook Field, let, let me ask you a question.
I mean, do you guys buy your fuel only at, over here? Over at your gas and for your vehicles?
Most of the time, we have cars at Sicko's.
You do have Sicko too? I mean, it's a small business. What's that?
We have wax cars though.
Okay, I'm just saying, like Sherman, I mean, he's a smaller business and he's a business trying to make it in town.
That's where I get my gas.
I would think you'd do more there than you would at a conglomerate down there.
So we brought up a good idea and we said that, we're like, we'll look into that, see if we could bulk purchase of fuel and use the cards for it, if that's, if that could save us money, you know?
I'm just saying, you know, all town, that's great, I use them all the time too. I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, you know, share a little bit. I mean, those guys are a struggling little business in town. They, they probably would appreciate more business, you know? So, I don't know.
And you know, we always welcome in here, we always value your opinion, we listen to what you say and.
Probably the boards don't.
I won't. But I just, you know, I, I just. They all work in town, they live here too, they, they all understand.
Again, it was, I, I feel for the residents, but it also took it out of my pocket this time too.
It took it out of all of our pockets, we all pay.
But I mean, but by, even by, I mean, I'm building houses, I, I didn't have any problems selling them. But with the interest rates and the taxes here, I'll probably start having a lot of problems selling houses, a lot of them, so, you know.
And I can tell you right now, we're deeply concerned about that because, again, we want people to move to our town. We wanna provide the best services we can. I don't know how many times we've talked about people calling and saying, hey, I'm looking for a place to live, there's no property out there. We're, and we always joke, I don't know if you listen, watch all the videos, I joke and like, oh, Jim needs to build more houses, you know?
No, I want them, but I won't be able to sell them, so, you know. But I just, I, I just think we gotta be frugal and this, this time, you know, the way things are, you should be. You know, I know I am in my own business, I, I don't, I'm not going crazy buying things and doing things. And, but when I see things that I think are a waste, yeah, you're gonna hear from me, especially if you look or keep my taxes where I can think they're reasonable, I won't say a word, I don't care who hides and who doesn't.
So this year, the direction for everybody is to level service. So we're running level services, meaning it is what it is. Um, you know, we're gonna provide the services, but we're not looking at any increases. You know, you gotta, if you have a fuel expense that goes up, we have to adjust for that. Because it gotta come from somewhere, but you're not adding anything.
I have a quick question. The solar farm that's on Little Restone, it went through bankruptcy a couple times or whatever, a while back. Are they still living up to the obligations that they have to the town in lieu of taxes? Do they, do we still get money from solar farm, that solar farm or any other ones or whatever?
Those things are very tricky.
Yeah, but that was the deal they made in the beginning.
We, we have, we enter into pilot programs. They don't pay taxes.
Right, in lieu of taxes.
We enter into a pilot program with them. The problem is, a lot of those things exchange owners several times.
Yeah, but that's.
And we don't know who the owners are, because they don't report it.
Yeah, but that's gonna be a lot of money.
Chasing them down is a whole nother deal. There's no, there's no hiding.
Mechanism to shut, shut down the solar, lock the gates. Put a cease and desist or something on the.
It's by the property, it's like, it's like if we went to your property and say, oh, you know, something, you're not paying enough taxes, we're gonna lock your, your gates, you can't do business no more. That's their business. And we can't, we, we don't have any mechanism to stop them. And they're protected. The state has passed a lot of laws to protect solar because it's green.
But meanwhile, you still have to have police and fire patrol them and everything else, it's costing us money in the long run.
And.
And I'm just, I'm.
They don't even have to enter into a pilot program with us.
I, I'm at a point that anybody that should be paying taxes should pay their darn taxes because. I, I'm at a point that anybody that should be paying taxes should pay their darned taxes because if they pay theirs, that's less we have to pay. If they don't pay, all of us have to make up for what they don't pay. So the delinquent taxpayers in town, and I've heard there's some in town that are six or seven, what, six or seven years? Why are they?
Oh, more than that.
Why are they getting away with that?
Um, they're not no more.
I would hope not, but I mean, the thing is, whatever they're not paying, we are.
But you got to remember, so it's easy to sit there and say, go after those people. Okay, we are, you know, and that's happening. But it's a case-by-case basis because now you have to pay. You have. Can you mute your mic? So it's a case-by-case basis because they actually have to go in and pay an attorney to stop processing paperwork. It has to go to court. You have to have that attorney go into court to fight for that, to show. You have to at least offer them an opportunity to pay the taxes back, what they can do. They have to default on that. There's a long process to do the whole thing. You can't just say, well, you haven't paid taxes in ten years, which there are some, and go after their property. You have to go through the court systems.
But are we going to, are we doing that procedure?
Yes.
We are, but it's taking, Dawn said to me a couple of months ago, it takes about three years to get it through the court system.
But, and again, I'm not throwing stones at Dawn, but we used to have a group, we were still somewhat active, but not really that much active. But Warren Citizens Action Committee, I was on it and there was several of us. And when Dawn first took over, and I think it was the, my kid can't remember her name, but anyhow. They, they, they were, they were working on it, but Dawn said she was overwhelmed with everything else, so she didn't know when she could get to it. How long has Dawn been here? And that's how long I spoke to her about it back then. And I said, our group said, we'll help you. What can we do to help you? And she was not almost said, I can take care of it. But obviously, if she's only been working on it for three years, it's, it's been.
No, it takes from the, yeah, it takes three years. They're coming out the other end now.
Yeah, I would hope so.
You got to remember, they have to go through court. You have to get court dates. The judges set the court dates, so the court, your judge can sit there and say, okay, well, we'll revisit this in six months. So you go to that court date, gets continued. Okay, well, where have you, where are you in the process with this? Okay, well, all right, well, let's revisit this in six months, see where it goes from there. And then you, you push it down. It's, it takes a long time to get these properties. And then once you get them, what do we do with them? Now we got to insure them, we got to auction them. There's a whole process, but we've streamlined that. And I don't know if you can touch on that a little bit.
So Dawn just had a municipal lien sale auction. I don't know if you saw that advertised. So she just had, she was selling the liens of, of some of the properties. So she's, she's moving some of them along to get, you know, just the liens part of it. Some of the foreclosure work, she's working with a Boston area firm on some of the foreclosure work. I want to work with her a little bit more, try to, you know, expedite the process a little bit more. You know, there's some, some areas that we can improve on internally that, that may be able to help this, this process along. We were very successful with the receivership program that we did in Springfield. I'd like to, you know, clean up some of the blight here in town as well. You know, we're working on that, that Bacon Street property, cleaning up the blight over there. It was a nightmare, nightmare. You know, there was a, a structure over there, unsafe. It was just, just a nightmare. Yeah, okay. But it, it's a cancer to the, to the street.
It is.
So, and, and it deferred, and you know, it, it, it affects the, the community. So we're working on that. We're going to, we're going to try to, to, to really focus in on some, some, cleaning up some blight and, and doing some more stuff with some tax title work.
Well, thank you. I think that's, it's about time, you know?
Can, can we ask Carrie if she wants to comment on the solar pilots? Ca- Carrie? Are you there, Carrie?
I'm probably going to go. Sorry, I'm trying to get there.
Could you?
The taxes.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Tom has announced. Thank you. I'm, I'm, I've been listening for a long time. So the taxes on the solar, we all have to pay.
Okay, that's all I asked.
Okay, so no, so no one's delinquent or, you know, MIA or anything? All right, you there? Carrie?
She went away.
Yeah.
Hello, sorry, can you hear me?
So is there anybody delinquent right now for solar or anything like that?
There's nobody, there's nobody delinquent. There may be like, you know, there may be some interest outstanding. I'm not looking at my records right now. But, um, yeah, they're all, they're all paid up. They're all comp payers. The only, the only one I would say is initially is the quite old thing, but.
ZPT.
Oh, you can't get them.
ZPT, yeah.
Because they can't operate.
Well, they are.
They are.
They are connected to the grid.
Okay, all right, all right. I thought I was going to say, is that whole thing? Unless you guys.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. But.
Okay.
But all the other ones, I mean, I, you know, I'd have to look. Somebody might be a quarter or so behind, but they, they paid up.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, that's pretty big, that's pretty big personal property though, so they, you know, they, they do that a lot of taxes. I don't have that number right here, but.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Answer.
Bye.
Bye.
So you get an answer on that?
Yeah, no, I just, it was a question. I didn't know. Because I knew they went bankrupt once. I didn't know if they were current or when they were.
And they're a problem. They're a problem for everybody, you know, throughout the whole state because they're protected.
Yeah.
There's very little we can do. You know, we, we try to, we can regulate them to a point. And, you know, we can put, you know, get them to go into pilot programs, which is in lieu of taxes. Because one of the problems that they do is they say, well, we're tax exempt. We, we don't have to pay taxes.
They pay good though. They pay a lot of money, I think, for, in lieu of taxes. I think they.
Yeah, it's rated and it's based on the property value and everything. They, they do a good job about that. But if they really want to argue, you know, they could say, we don't owe you anything. And it's optional to go into a pilot program. They don't have to do that. You know, same thing with taxes. They can argue the point.
Who's that you want? Who's that you want?
Me? You're talking?
Who's that you want? I'm sorry, who's that, who's that you want?
What are you talking about?
With solar?
I'm talking about, talking about whether solar, we all got to pay taxes or not.
I'm in favor of solar myself, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of solar, so. Yeah.
Solar in the right spot is right.
If it's done in a brown zone or something like that.
Yeah, but when I, but, I'm sorry, excuse me. When I say you say you want, I mean, are you on the town side or you on the solar side? Don't be saying, you know, you say, say in taxes.
I'm on the town side.
I mean, yeah. Right, okay. So don't be saying, tell us how many families pay taxes if they don't have to pay taxes, if they don't want to do that.
I think she's misunderstanding what you're, yeah.
Yeah.
I can't hear her at, you know, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to hear, but yes, they, they, they got, we, we enter into a pilot program, which they pay. The problem is, from the planning board's side, we get the argument of, you know, well, I don't even have to pay taxes because I'm tax exempt. I, you know, they do a percentage or whatever.
To nonprofit.
Is a nonprofit. And they don't have to pay anything. And this argument, there's litigation and there's all kinds of laws being passed. And it seems to be well into the protection of solar.
Right.
You know, and we try to do what we can for the best interests of the town with those projects. But they, they got big lawyers and they win a lot of this stuff, which take away rights from us. And someday it may get to the point where we can't make any, we can't tell them to do anything. Hopefully not, but, you know, we're doing our best. Was there anything else?
No, I'm done. I'm sorry about, like I said, just, I was just frustrated and I had to get off my chest. I wasn't here for just myself. It's just, I'm sure there's a lot of people that feel the same way. Why they don't come to a meeting and say something is beyond me, but it bothered me, so.
People are always welcome to come to a meeting. We gave you the time. We gave you, what? Forty-five, fifty minutes to discuss it?
You sit on there, come on.
So, but, and that's the thing. That's part of being transparent and we open it up to other people. So when you do have a complaint, you can come to us and vent it and say, hey, how can we fix this? You may think of something that we hadn't thought of, just like you brought up, the fact that maybe we can do a bulk fuel purchase with the gas station. Store it at the gas station, have them, and do it that way. That's an option. I didn't think of that before.
No.
But it's a good option.
I'm just not sure as a, for liability, if you want your own gas station, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we, we're trying to find any way of saving money. And the biggest expense right now for our town is fuel.
Yeah.
You know, well, other than the school. The school is a big expense. And that's, we're getting, we're going to try to get into check because our town can't afford it.
No, no.
And Jim can attest to it. We've all been sitting there and going back and forth with the school. And they're very well aware, people are not going to be happy if they come in front of this town and ask for two million dollars above minimum contribution. They asked for one point six last year.
They started, yeah, that's what they started, yeah.
For minimum contribution. And, and they were getting Esser funds and using that at the time too. So now they don't have Esser funds.
Yeah.
And they still have all the debts and their gas and fuel expenses have gone up.
If they get that money, let me know. I'll donate all the tumbleweeds. It goes kind of just right through the center of the town. They're going to be gone, so.
So, well, what we're trying to do.
The town has to vote on that though.
We're, we're trying to work with them way ahead of the game. So we attended a budget meeting in December. We're going to attend one on February first, so in a couple, couple of weeks. And we're trying to engage them now to see what they're coming up with and how we can deal with it. And, you know, deal with this, the issue of the loss of the Esser funds and a number of things that have come up recently.
They're threats or empty threats. They say, if you don't give us this, we're going to have to get rid of this position, that position. They, they take the positions that most people want and they never do that. They never eliminate.
Very well aware of that.
Yeah.
And that's why we're trying to work with them now to maybe get rid of some of that stuff and try and rein it all in.
Try to give options of other things that they can do to cut some costs. And Mr. Farrar has been great with that, coming up with things, going through the budget and trying to have discussions with the superintendent over there to, to make it very well aware of where the board stands and the town stands with the school.
But again, it's not the school per se as much as the, the ones that made the decisions that are problems.
Right. And you're like everybody else, we want the schools to do well. We want everybody, if we had a Bill Gates in town that could sit here and dump twenty million dollars into our economy like it was nothing, that'd be great. We don't have that. The school, they do an amazing job. The teachers are awesome.
Yep.
The, the principals, they go above and beyond. We're just praising Principal Duff.
He's the best.
For standing up, the, the shelter with us and helping us out and taking his own time to help out and do what he could there to help. He didn't have to do that. That, that shows his character. But it's the finances of the school that's a problem.
That's right.
And we need to get that in check. And we've all been making it very clear. That's a big concern for us. And it's going to get worse because they are going to come in front of this town looking for a larger sum than they've ever looked for before because they've not cut in the programs that they got, they're not cutting the excess out. Their expenses are going up and they've lost Esser funds, which they were using to help support what they were doing. The money's got to come from somewhere. And I could guarantee right now, every resident in this town should probably be concerned and be showing up at that town meeting.
In the past, in the past, Warren would say, no, Westbrookfield would bring us to the regular, the big meeting and then Westbrookfield would outvote us basically and then we'd have to give in. But I think Westbrookfield's in a worse position. I know they are.
They actually made it worse for us because with them, they actually voted to support the school more after told, telling us that they could do zero above minimum contribution. And they made it very clear at a meeting to us and with the school that they would provide zero above minimum contribution. And then all of a sudden, boom, they had all this money.
So bury them. Say, well, what can you afford? If they say we can afford a million, say then we'll, we'll put up two million. Put it, bury them. So they're.
I ain't going in front of the town saying, we need two million dollars.
They're getting, how much do we give them? Like five hundred thousand? And no, we're going for two million. No, I'm just saying.
Call it off.
And I'll say, all right, well, we're busy that night.
You can't.
Yeah. Bury them.
You're going to get a haircut.
But that's the thing. The two towns need to work together. And when we agree with something, we all need to go in there united. We can't break apart when we go in front of the school. That's both towns. Our town stands strong, but we don't control Westbrookfield. And that's the problem with being in a regional deal. It has its benefits, but we have two towns, two boards. They have a FinCom, we have a FinCom. We all have to vote. Now they want to add in a third town? Yeah. So again, not a fan of that stuff, but we're trying to control it. We, we are paying taxes too. We understand. And we're upset too about it.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, like I said, I just feel for the residents, let's, you know, honestly.
Believe me, that's why we're trying to do things like senior tax abatement programs, things like that to help. So we can augment the tax bill for some seniors. That's why, how many times do I tell you guys to get grants? All this stuff that they have, it's grant money. It's not coming from the taxpayers. We're going after grants, anything we can get. And every week, this is the first week that they came in here and they didn't have a grant, okay? But they had money elsewhere. So we're, we're always battling these to try to get money elsewhere. But we got to face the facts. If we don't, if we don't invest in our infrastructure, businesses won't come here.
That's right.
So we have to make that initial investment to get that going. We have to improve things like a town common. Because when you bring your business here, you look at the town common, you're like, eh. Then you go to Westbrookfield and it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Okay? They present well. They're, financially, they're in another situation. We're doing a lot better in our situation. We're able to get new fire equipment, new police equipment, to invest in that for the future. You know, and that's what we got to do. You, you, when you're building a business, you, you want to come in. You're going to survey the town, you're going to look at the area, what do they provide, what services? If they have a rundown ambulance that's on chalk blocks somewhere, if that medical emergency came to us.
But we do have that situation. We're, we're the police department is. We do have that.
We do, and we're trying to address it. And we know as well as anybody that we are very concerned about that and we want them out of there. We, we've said it many times.
If, if it's been legally condemned, they don't have.
Hasn't been legally condemned.
Okay, then how come everybody was told that it was condemned?
It's not condemned. The building inspector said people, they should not be occupying the building. But to condemn it, it's a different process.
So why don't we fix it where they are? I mean, spend some money to fix it all. If, if we can't afford to do anything else.
Where's the money coming from?
I'm just saying. Where's the money going to come?
It's cheaper to build a new building.
But you, that's not going to happen.
Yeah, but we're just saying.
It's cheaper.
It's millions and millions and millions of dollars.
I understand that. What I'm saying, you, you, I'm telling you, someday you're going to get someone that's going to say, I could sit from there. It's going to cost a lot of fortune.
How many times have we addressed that? That concerns with that building?
Quite a few.
So Jim.
How long you been there?
Quite a long time.
So we're not actually addressing it though.
We have a grant to do a feasibility study on a public safety complex. So that's a study that no one has to pay for.
Right.
So that's going to be coming up. So step by step, I think we can.
That just doesn't build it though, that's the problem.
No, I know, but we're looking at sources of funding to build it too because talking with Inangobi in the past, they were looking at doing a, some sort of public safety complex.
Bond bill.
Bond or grant process or something to do that, to help towns build a complex. Because again, we're not the only ones in this situation.
No, I'm sure we're not. But there's other towns that are smaller than us. No, I'm sure we're not. But there's other towns that are smaller than us that were able to do it. I question how that happened.
Yeah.
You know, North Brookfield. I mean, I didn't think they had that much, but they turned around, built beautiful.
Who?
North Brookfield, yeah. How did that happen? I don't know.
Well, I mean, if we go and talk to them and see what they did, maybe they have some.
That makes sense, but, but meanwhile.
They lived in a bar for a year.
Yeah, they lived in bad conditions for a while and then.
They got a lot of grants. That was on Brownsfield.
That one was, yeah.
That was on Brownsfield. They got a lot of Brownsfield money from the state. We're gonna have to, you know, talk to our, our reps and senators and really lobby them hard to, you know, to see whatever money's out there available, you know, to really, you know, work on that project. It's gonna be a whole big project.
We're trying.
Taxpayers won't be able to fund it, that's for sure.
And we know that and we've been saying that. There's no way we can fund that. If anything, we may have to do a bit of a matching grant, which typically these things are. Or take our, uh, with a loan for it, a bond, and pay it back over years to, to ease it a little bit. But that's why we're trying to increase our bond rating too by putting money into our reserves. So when they look at us, they say, oh, you guys are doing pretty well as far as financially. You've got money in reserves. And that looks well for us to get a lower rate or increase our chances of getting a better type of.
That's double as soon too because as a taxpayer, I see you there with that kinda money and you just raise money.
You see that there.
I should say, why? Why use that money? Why, why?
But that's why is because then it will help us in the long run. In an emergency, we can't run to the town and in an emergency and say, okay, we gotta raise appropriate this money or anything. We have money. We can allocate it in an emergency situation. We never had that.
I just think that you should be more active in deciding where it's going to go. Whether you're gonna buy a piece of property or you're gonna try and make the highway private fit it, but that should be, I think.
That would be part of the feasibility studies, looking at different scenarios.
Right now, I mean, I can't see where it's gonna go down street or anything. It's not, no room down there. Unless you take the common, you wanna fix it up, put a new police station.
Yeah. Even that's a little.
There's a wood saw.
That's a small, small piece of property because the fire station, again, we need to have it, this terrorism reading for this building now. You know, there's a lot of, it's not like you could just sit there and say, okay, I'm gonna buy a garage, couple, couple days and, you know, that's the building now. You know, we didn't even know about this terrorism reading thing until we really started getting into this. And they're like, you need to have the wiring this way. What? Where'd this come from? And now we know about it. So we can prepare for that. We're learning as we're going. But nobody else has taken up this challenge. You know, we know their dire needs. They need something, but we can't pull them out of something till we have someplace to put them. So we're looking at places, you know, we looked at the bank.
Yeah.
You know?
You should come back to the bank. But it's not much longer because I'm gonna start doing stuff with it, but.
Well, the subcommittee looked at it. They looked at that. They looked at the Dex Trust building, the mills. They looked at options. There's a variety of commercial space that they can go into and they have to have certain needs. There's certain requirements.
Back up. I, I don't, I don't think that was, that, I, I didn't understand that whole bid, that thing was wrong. And I'm not throwing stones at you. I just didn't, the committee should have gone to whoever applied and they should have said, okay, this is what we really need. And then someone, a landlord could say, well, I could do that or no, I'm not gonna do that. And then you could get a final price of what it was gonna cost for rent. The way it came out, I couldn't do that. I mean, I, I don't know. They have nine offices. How do I know nine of them won't fit in one office or maybe one, one, I don't know. I mean, I didn't know what to present to them. So I said, you wanna write the whole thing? Fine, there it is. But there should have been other options and, you know, it was, it was limited of what we could do. I couldn't meet with the chief to say, what are your needs? Or, you know, it was just hired. So again, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but we could have probably reached an agreement, whether it be me or Wrights or whoever was doing it. But because it was so limited, there wasn't a way for anybody.
So once it goes into a big process, we can't talk to you. We, we have to kinda stop.
I understand.
Because you can't be like, any, you know, you can't show. So if Williams turned around and said, okay, we found out you guys were negotiating with Jim.
Yeah.
And trying, trying to design a building over there, then Wright's, well, the Dex Trust could eventually go after us.
So what I, what I, what I would have foreseen was that you put it out to bid, you have ten bidders. All ten bidders.
We have ten bidders in this town.
But I say, say there was ten bidders or whether there's two or ten, whatever it is, but then you meet with them individually and you explain, you walk through the building. You don't talk prices. You talk to, you walk through and say, I need this room, I need this room, I need this room, I need this room. Then it's up to the person who's bidding on it to say, I can do this for X amount. And it, or they may say, he may say, hey, I wanna steal, steal beam across here and, and I may say, no, I'm not doing that. You do that if you want that. So that's an expense you have to know about. But you need to, someone needs to walk through and I'm not saying just for me, with whoever asks. You do that with individuals and then you come back, then you come back and submit, they submit their bids. And you've met with everybody. But now at least a landlord knows what you want because nine officers, okay, well, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there's a spot, there's nine of them, you can stand in there. I, I don't know, you know, I, I don't know if there's requirements or whatever. And it is a temporary situation.
Yes.
So no matter what you do, I mean, you can't change it, we've all talked about, can't change it a million things, but on the, on the flip side, that would have worked fine. If, if, I mean, I, we, alright, I, I gave an estimate of what it would, you know, a price. But maybe you didn't need all what we offered. Maybe it was less you could have gotten away with. There would have been less money. It would have been, you know, whatever. But we're no further ahead today than we were then. So, but, and that is, that is.
We're trying.
Yeah.
It is, it's a valid point.
You've limited them where you can go.
Well, it's probably, there's bidding laws and stuff.
Well, you, you can't be too restrictive on these things. So you gotta kinda give a general, you know, kind of what you're looking for, very general, so very basic. And the creativity comes with the bidder, right? So it's the bidder's job to, well, I wanna bid this job and I'm, this is how I'm gonna show you how I'm gonna put nine officers in this building. This is how, this is the layout. This is where we're gonna show you where we're gonna have the two bathrooms, the two bathrooms are there, where the lockers are there, where, where desks can be situated. That's, that's the creativity of the bidder to do that work. So it's, it's kind of very general in nature.
Yeah.
There was a process there that you could have asked for questions if you wanted to. Questions were accepted during a certain period of time and then we would respond to those questions. And then those questions would be, would be, would have been, become public so that everybody would have seen the, seen the responses and the answers and the questions. So it's a process and I, I realize that maybe the town hasn't really had the opportunity to do this.
Yeah. My, my, my problem is, is say I said, whatever, and you guys say, hey, that's a very, very price. But then you come in and say, well, I, this isn't gonna work. So then it's town expense on top of that. But if you came in and said, hey, you know, I need this and the landlord, whoever it may be, whether it's me or somebody else, I don't, wherever, it doesn't matter. But then they could say, well, I'll do that as part of what I'm gonna put in on my bid. You know, you kinda customize it a little bit without going crazy because it is a temporary thing. You go, you can do those things, but there was, there's no give or take, you know? So I mean, it was like this, I, I couldn't. I mean, I, I don't know what their needs are. I've never been in the police department, I don't think. I've been inside the door and I don't wanna be in their cells or to their bed. I don't know what their needs are. So I, I can't, I just said, okay, here it is. You wanted to, fine. If you don't want that much, we can divide it. If you want more, you can go upstairs. I, I don't care. But my, then when the banks started looking at it, I, I would prefer a bank, sorry, but you know, I mean, I, I don't wanna go over the service to the bank all the time either, so.
The goal is to get a bank in there and that's what we all wanna see.
But the thing is, I don't wanna.
But it's your business. It's your building.
I don't wanna learn to sit there forever, you know?
No.
Have you, I don't know, can you say, have you talked to other banks or approached other banks?
I had brochures made up of the whole building, showing all the inside and outside of the building and all the divisions and stuff. And I sent it to probably almost thirty banks, twenty something banks. I've not had a response from any one of them except that one that was very, very interested. I'd like to get Watson in if I could, but they just don't seem to be, I think that would be a good fit for us too, you know?
Yeah.
At this point, anybody would be a good fit, you know, but I don't know. The drive-through, I mean, the ATM machine's working and that thing is busy as all ha, I, I, you know, I, I don't get it, you know, but.
Yeah. Well, it was, it was, the way it was laid out to us when meeting with the bank commissioner
Yeah.
is the overhead. They have to keep so many people in the bank to manage those positions. Cause you, to cut the ties and move on. We tried.
Yeah.
We had many meetings. You know, we even tried going to Bubba. And then after was the.
The banking commissioner.
Banking commissioner. We met with the banking commissioner to try to stop that project from leaving, to stop them from leaving the town. And they, they evaluated because there are other banks, maybe not in our town, but close to town within a radius that it just, we didn't have a case. But they did hold them off as long as they could.
Yeah.
But.
Anyhow, I know these guys got distance to go, so I'm done. I don't wanna hold them up anymore.
You sure not now?
I'm done.
Have you tried any credit unions? Have you solicited any credit unions?
I have a list of all of us we sent things out to. I know my secretary did it all, so I don't know.
You know, maybe, maybe checked. I don't know what we have for credit unions around, but.
Yeah, Southbridge has one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Southbridge, right.
I actually called Southbridge twice because I, I met with a guy that, and he said, hey, call these people. Called them twice and then, oh, the girl that answers always excited, but no one ever calls back.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Can we intervene in that in any way?
Well, I mean, you know, I think we, you know, we, we talked about maybe, you know, having a, a committee, right, Rich?
Yeah.
Economic Development Committee, you know, you know, maybe if the town was ever to get together and, you know, with the business owners like yourself and some selectmen and, you know, maybe we could, you know, help, you know, try to get business in the downtown area, you know?
I've tried, to be honest with you, I haven't tried anywhere outside of the police department or a bank. That's the only interest I really have at this point. I wanna do something tastefully. I don't, I don't wanna put housing or something. That's one of the reasons why I want the building is I didn't wanna see it go into housing and that's not a place for it there, I don't think, you know?
Jim, bank brewery.
Seriously.
How many more bars can we put down on Main Street?
No, but this is a brew pub.
They'd be good there.
Yeah.
That'd be cool.
It's a great building.
You don't need a lot of space for breweries anymore.
Yeah.
I bet with a guy that wants to do marijuana there and it's like, I'm not even big on that. There's so much of it now, it's flooded. But then I checked the bylaws and what do you want to do? Thank God he can't do any, he wanted to have like a, they just go in there and get stolen inside. It's like, no, this doesn't work. Here you go. Police department. So no, so that, I don't, I'm really gonna entertain that at all, so. Again, I haven't even advertised. I haven't tried anybody else. I was kinda hoping, say, a bank would be what we really need, so. Or a police department.
Don't give up.
No, I get, I'm not gonna leave it empty forever because my insurance next year is gonna go crazy because, you know, it's a, it's a vacant building. So when it's vacant, it's expensive, so. Yeah. Done, go home.
Chief, you really had something?
I just wanted to say just a couple of things and I, and I've known Jim for years and he has a lot of valid points. But I, I think people need to understand a couple of things. In my opinion, I've said this many times over the last, especially the last two years. Cause I've, I've noticed a giant change in everything over the last two years in many different ways. People need to recognize that this town is transitioning in some ways, okay? And what I mean by that is that, is that we're seeing a change in people. We're seeing a change in the lack of volunteerism on many different boards and committees and everything. So when you miss those people, you have to make up for those people with salaries sometimes and other things. The other things that we're seeing is a huge increase in call volume. The population's not changing, the, you know, the people aren't changing, the demographics aren't changing, but the call volume is changing tremendously. We've had a ten percent increase in call volume, which is a huge record for us. We set numbers this year. I know the PD is the same way. Highway, I know, has taken on, as you said, those more responsibilities. And people do need to factor that in. They have to understand that the needs are changing. And, and I've heard many times where people have said, well, it's always been that way for thirty years. I can always remember there was this and this. And I'm not, I'm just saying, I've heard a lot of people say that. What they don't understand is this town has not modernized a lot in those many years in the past. And that's what we're seeing now and some of those things like security to this building, some of those things, the ARPA projects with the, with the, these are all things that would have had to go to the town if we hadn't been able to do it with ARPA. And I understand ARPA is taxpayer money. I get it. But it's also spread over a federal group as opposed to a local group. And people need to understand that the projects that were picked off with ARPA were, in my opinion, ninety-nine percent of them were very essential because it would have had to go to the individual tax base of Warren if we hadn't have done it that way. We wouldn't, you know, the, the, our radio system was failing. You know, that was a huge safety concern. Again, with liability, if an officer was hurt, brought a domestic or something and couldn't call in, we're trying to fix that. You know, the cruisers for the police department, you know, that fleet had been depleted for years and was never addressed for many years. As you know, you know, and some of it because of personal vendetta over the years.
I need to fix those.
By doing the things that we're trying to do now, I just want people to understand the need is there. Because if you just look at the sheer numbers and what we're being called for, so I understand there's a huge, this has been the first time that the taxpayers, myself included as a homeowner, you know, have seen a huge increase in that. And I get it, but there are other, a lot of other factors that are in there, you know what I mean? And people need to recognize it for what it is because the work, you know, the, the responsibilities and, and the charges that are being put on, on the different departments and stuff are something they've never had before, you know what I mean? And, you know, specifically like the pickup truck or something. I'm not defending that, I'm just bringing up as a point. So here's, I don't know of a single department around us that doesn't have a utility pickup truck that we've never had. I've been asking my own people to throw all that stuff in the back of their own pickups for years. We've been doing it for thirty something years. We've been occurring dense dings and damage to people's personal vehicles. No one's ever said anything before. But people aren't the same as they are anymore. They may not be willing to pick up a thousand feet of LDH and slam couplings in the back of their truck. I also have had other people complain that we're taking the ambulance on inspections. It's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar vehicle. You're running fuel around. Well, guess what? Now we're trying to fix that problem so that we can do simple inspections. We can come back to the station. We can haul all that stuff in. That was the reason behind it. It's not a project that would have ever put on a town meeting because it wasn't, wouldn't have been seen as an essential thing. But because we could get it, I could explain it why the need was there and we never, again, getting away from the liability of having personal vehicles do town stuff. Just like people trying to get away from the liability of having personal people, uh, uh, people paying for town items on their credit cards. Those are things that never should happen and never should have happened and now we're trying to fix it. And some of that does come with a cost unfortunately to take that, that liability and that issue away from people that shouldn't have had to be put in those positions in the first place, in my opinion. You know, and like I said, and, you know, it is, it is, it is what it is. But my main point is that people do need to understand that there are some factors outside that they're probably not aware of that has put us in the position we are today to kinda play catch-up to get the town a little bit more modernized to where they should be. You know, and probably should have been before that, is all I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the brush truck, that's fairly new.
But it has a skin unit on the back. We can't do anything with it.
There's no way of making more room?
No, that's, that's, I mean, if I had, I'm just trying to explain it for what it is. That brush truck has a designated pump and tank and everything on it. It's mounted permanently to it. That's what it's for. You know, we have the squad, the Humvee, but we're having electrical problems with it. We got that free from the army. It's not, I mean, it's a diesel, you can't do it. So for us, again, all of those things that we've always done for years, I've had to ask, hey, can you bring up your pickup truck and throw the pump in the back and throw all this stuff in the back? And I can tell you, in my, my personal vehicles, I've got dense ding scratches and everything else from calls from the fire department. And is that fair to put that on them? You know what I mean?
See, I, I think grants are great because they, they'll buy, grants for all kinds of things other than vehicles are great. But for vehicles, they're the worst things in the world as far as I'm concerned. For the simple reason that we lived without that truck for years. We've not needed it. I mean, now you're saying.
Well, the problem is because we never recognized what the need was and everyone always did this. But like, all it takes is one person to put a coupling from a hose through their, through their three hundred and fifty dollar headlight. And all of a sudden they come to me and go, you know, what's this? Now the town's not gonna pay for it.
Well, but I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying grants, because what happens is you, a grant buys a vehicle. And then all of a sudden that vehicle's life expectancy is gone. And now the town has to buy the second one because we can't live without it. We lived without it for years, but now we can't live without it because we've had it. So I, I guess I'm just saying that. And I understand it's just too bad something, when we bought the brush truck, we couldn't have done something to help that situation. You know, I mean, I guess nobody was aware that.
There's really nothing you can do with a brush truck. It's designated for a brush truck. You can't just take the components off of it and call it a pickup truck because it's, it's mounted. I mean, you're talking, you know, hundreds and hundreds of pounds of water on it and.
So, so by you getting this pickup, is your old truck going?
The old car too, yes. That's on its last legs. As soon as that truck comes in, that truck's being retired.
And the Humvee's going?
The Humvee will be probably going at some point. Right now, we use it for. Well, no, we use it specifically for the storm because the other side of it too, you gotta realize, for highway too, I mean, we, there's a lot of other factors. Because we're seeing a ton of wicked, more severe storms. We're going to those all the time. the time, a lot more cleanup, you know, all of these things, especially, again, in the last two years, there's just so many factors that people aren't understanding, that they're not seeing on the day-to-day basis, to be able to, that we got to deal with, you know?
So does that mean your role's changed? I mean, it's from now, fire, didn't, the fire department didn't go out for all those questions?
Well, I, I think, I think the role has changed for all of us, and I guess that's my point, is that, is that the role is for all of our departments, we, we're, we're being called upon for a lot more things we weren't once called upon for. Um, you know, that's just the way it is. I mean, people are different, their, their, their ideas of what our responsibilities are have changed, you know what I mean? And, you know, and that judgment has changed in some way. So all I'm saying is that we respond to a lot more stuff than we once did, not only just call volume-wise, but a lot of different, you know, different types of things, especially with the weather changes that we've seen and the storms, so.
I just, I look at it as saying, okay, are you being called for more highway stuff than you are?
No, no, I, I, no, I can say, I can say with a hundred percent accuracy and honesty that no, there's no, that nobody's shirking their responsibility from one department to the next, that, you know, in fact, I've said many times, I, the relationship we have in this town is kind of second to none between the departments, in my opinion. I can call Jeremy every, any time of the day, or Jerry any time of the day, and get them on the phone and say, hey, look, and I got a problem, I need your help with this, and they'll be out, you know? There's no doubt about that, you know, so, no, uh, you know, that, that hasn't changed whatsoever. It's not like Highway says, you guys deal with these roads and I'll do this. No, it's more of just a, it's more of a, of a team effort to be able to, in my opinion, provide that best service for the townspeople. You know, they're working on one road, we'll close off another. They, they'll come to their necks, cut those trees, and we'll close another, you know what I mean? So, you know, it is what it is, I'm just trying to explain it for what it is, and I'm just trying to explain in general, that, that, you know, what I've seen in the last few years has been something the town has been morphing into, you know, covering some of these insurance things for these vacant properties. Those are all things that may have not been done before, because they were overlooked, but it costs money. But it doesn't mean it's not important, because if some kid walked into one of those homes and that thing came down on their head, you know, I mean, those are just, all I'm saying is those are all things that for forty-five years, people were like, whatever, it's fine, it's all good, but in today's world, it can't be that way. And, and we're kind of paid for that, and like I said, I appreciate all your comments, but just, you understand, I, I do have to say, in my opinion, I think the board has tried to wipe off a lot of the capital projects with some of the ARPA money, and again, it's taxpayer money, I'm not denying that at all, but it's a federally based tax base as opposed to a locally based.
So you understand with ARPA too?
Yeah.
ARPA money has already been taken from all, all the, um, all citizens. So you've paid those taxes, they've taken that money, they pulled it all up, and then we distribute it to the different areas, to different states, then the states distribute that to towns, if the town opts into it. Some towns choose not to receive any ARPA funds, and they lose out on that. We got aggressive right off the bat, and said, give us the money, we can use it, give us the ARPA money. And again, if we don't take it, somebody else is. You've already paid the taxes, you already paid that bill, well, you're going to be paying the bill. Whether it goes to our town or somebody else's town is up to us. So we chose to take that money and put it into our town to, again, invest in long-term things that we have not had. Radio infrastructure, it was, it was bad, it's failing. There's this several areas in town that the radios don't cover. They can't call anybody, they don't get response, okay? Besides that, it's so outdated that it's costing little money to try to find parts, because they don't make the stuff anymore.
I, I know all about that stuff, I, I'm fully aware of what you're talking about. And I, and I don't begrudge them for the radio system or any of that kind of stuff.
I just want you to know, our-
I know, I know, it's-
Our residents, it's not like the ARPA funds are coming directly from the town of Warren residents, and we're raising your taxes to pay for ARPA. ARPA is a federal-based money that gets distributed to the states and then distributed to towns that opted into ARPA.
Okay, but my, see, my thought was, like, all, I mean, I looked at, it was a lot of expended, a lot of expenses to share. I mean, you did, you spent a lot of money. I mean, obviously it shows because our tax bills went up. But I look at, like, like you say, those funds, could we have taken those funds and bought something that taxpayers would buy instead of buying a pickup? Or was that seventy, eighty thousand, I would think?
We did.
Sixty thousand?
We did do that, with a lot of stuff. We took off a lot of these big expenses.
It would have been down the road, like-
The glitch screen at the store apartment, we used it for that, uh, we used it for the radio infrastructure project, uh, that was a big one. There's so many that we put this money into that our residents don't have to pay for now. And Adam's great at explaining it, but we need to have to raise taxes to pay for that stuff that we have to have.
But what, what?
If our, if, if we had to come to the town, and how much, how much was the radio project total?
Six hundred and seventy, something thousand?
And then get that from taxes? Okay, the taxes are going up to pay for that, for something they absolutely have to have, okay? Because the radio infrastructure's failing.
But with the increases in taxes that we just went through, if you, all aside the other those funds, why did, what was the, what did we spend all that money on? I mean, I, I see what it is, most of it's labor. I mean, that's, the truth of the matter is, that's where it went, mostly it's the labor.
The general meeting in May, we got the entire list of raise inappropriate. That's the problem, right there.
But it wasn't, there wasn't a lot of a raise, raise inappropriate. Most of it was coming out of free cash, and I think the taxes were to replace the free cash.
There were probably half a dozen of them that were-
So, so that, you kind of think about that, when you're a taxpayer sitting there and someone's saying, it's not going to cost you anything in your taxes because it's going to come out of free cash, it really is, because you're replenishing the free cash. So in reality, it is coming, a raise inappropriate, because you're replacing, replacing cash.
I, I think you're, you're right, a lot of it was salary-based, you know, that is, I think that that's, that's clearly evident. I think that that's clearly evident, I agree with you a hundred percent. The problem is, is that what people, again, weren't seeing behind the scenes, is that we were no longer going to be able to, and we still struggle with it because of what's going on in our world, but we were no longer be, going to be able to provide the services the town was asking us to do it with the salary base that the employees had, because we couldn't keep them, okay? We just couldn't, and that was the problem. It was a revolving door for myself, for, for Jerry, for, for Jeremy, like, we had hit a wall. And that, and again, here's where that modernization comes in, because we had been doing it for so long, and I think in, in, in a lot of ways, a lot of our employees, especially the local ones, were even sometimes not knowing they were taking the hometown discount. You know, people were getting a service for very little money compared to what other towns were, were putting into it. And I think right now, we're hitting that wall, where we're realizing it, and for the first time, this is what's happened. And, and, and when I say that, for many reasons. Again, look what's happened to your boards and committees, look what's happened to your cert teams, look what's happened to your volunteer fire department that once was fifty-plus strong and now down to, you know, twenty-five to thirty. You know, what we're seeing is not because people don't care, not that because they're bad people, they just can't do it anymore with all the other restrictions they have and the time commitments and everything like that. So all those services the town was getting for a very minimal price and a very, very cheap-based, you know, budgets and everything, are now, we're looking at it as today's reality. And that's, I think, where what people are finally having to come to terms with in a lot of different ways.
I know, I mean, we all, we're all paying a lot more money to our employees than we used to, and I completely understand that. But I think what I, I guess my complaint is, is if you had a person leave, you should have replaced that person, not added two or three more, plus that person.
Well, and again, here's, and again, a lot of it is based on call volume and issue. And again, that's the, that's the, that's the reality that, you know, because I've already said to these, you know, to the board already, next meet, you know, I can barely survive the way I am right now. I didn't take on an employee last year, I wish I did when the other departments did. I'm kicking myself for that. I'm spending a lot of time in the ambulance myself, and I'm doing it to keep the department afloat, but it doesn't mean we have the staff that we're supposed to have. And when I'm relying on, you know, eighty-five percent of my staff to say, pick me, I'll go on call for eight hours and make next to nothing, you know, in today's world, it's not a function, it's not an equation that works anymore. It did in the seventies, eighties, nineties, and even up into the two thousands, but now it's not working. I think, it's not Warren, it's, it's across the board, it's, it's across the country. And all of these types of departments that have operated that way for years, because it's the way it's always been, are no longer functioning correctly, and that's the problem. That's why you see such a die-off. I mean, we've seen a third of EMS personnel across our country leave the profession, a third, you know, across our entire country. That tells you that they are finding other professions, they're not being paid enough and everything, and I, I get it. It ends up falling on the taxpayers' back, but at least we can explain it, you know, and that's the point.
I think, I think a lot of the paramedics and stuff, or they all left because of COVID.
Well, and, and again, that's why I say, I see this two-year window, when I'm talking two years, because I've seen a tremendous change in a very small amount of time with everybody, and, and all the boards, all the committees, and from one side of the country to the other, in the world for that matter. But, you know, we've hit a transition period where people are, we've hit that wall, and people are trying to find a way to recover from it. They're, and, and they're winded, and, and, and they're dizzy from the hit they're taking, you know? And I just, and for what it's worth, I'm not, and, you know, I've had the most respect for you over the years, Jim, we've known each other for years, we work together very well, but I just, I feel it was important to let people know some of the other factors that are into this equation.